Okay, we've gotten the go-ahead. So, any agenda changes today?
No, there are none.
Okay. So, our next item is the public comment period, and this is an opportunity for anyone in the audience that would like to address the Planning Commission on an item that is not on our agenda today. Now would be your time.
I'm going to begin. You will both go through it, explain who you are and what your responsibilities are. What might you tell us?
Well, we're going to the Planning Commission. We're appointed by the County Board of Supervisors for each district, and our names are up here at the front of the podium.
What are your responsibilities?
Our responsibilities are to hear matters on planning and land use issues, and either make decisions or recommendations to the Board of Supervisors regarding those decisions. You're very welcome. Even though you should have come up to the podium, I suppose, but we'll let that slide. So, hearing no one else, we are moving under the consent agenda, which is the approval of the minutes from the June 11, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. Are there any revisions, corrections to the minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Kelly's got a few?
Well, David Sirias, if I pronounced right, his name is misspelled. He's a Deputy County Council, number one.
He's the Assistant County Council. It's S-I-R-I-A-S.
Right. And the other one, in a couple places in this minutes, it says that Mr. Foley explained that the applicant in the matter last time was instructed by County Council and the Planning Director to submit this application. I don't have detailed notes of that, but that doesn't seem correct to me. I don't understand Mr. Foley saying somebody else instructed his client to file this. I think it was suggested, and I think that's what he said. I think Annette has agreed to go back and take a look and see what he did say.
My other collection is that that is what Mr. Foley said. It wasn't necessarily accurate, but that was the language that Mr. Foley used, and that's why it's reflected in the minutes that way.
Okay.
Are you satisfied with that? Okay. So, it was the correction of Mr. Sirias' name then. With that revision, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Shall I move?
Second. It's been moved in second, and all in favor? The aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. The next item of business is our public hearings, and before we get started with those, I guess I'll open the public hearing, but there has been a request by one of the Commissioners to continue this item to our next meeting due to the significant volume of information that has been received to the Commissioners, particularly in the last couple of days, which has made it very difficult for this Commissioner to accurately vet and read through and review all of the information that has been presented before us. So, at this point, I'd like to see if there are other Commissioners, or if there's going to be a motion for a continuance, and so I'm opening it to the Commission.
The Commissioner question wishes to continue all the matters that are on the agenda?
Yes.
I'm not in favor of that, at least with respect to item one. I think during the course of today, it may come to our attention, the advisability of continuing item two without previewing all the information. I think that may come to light, that that would be a reasonable consideration, but I'm fully prepared to continue with item one.
I would agree with David, but a lot of information did come in last minute on item number two that I think we need more time to review.
Okay. Ted?
Oh, I agree with some things didn't come through until this morning, and some of that's rather likely.
But were those with respect to items one or two?
I don't know. I did receive an email right before I left. I have no idea what it was. I know it was pertaining to this hearing, but I don't know the extent or the volume, or in particular what it was in, which public hearing it was in reference to.
Are you referring to? Excuse me.
I think it was from the Calveras Planning Coalition.
Yes. In the way of public comment, there's bound to be all kinds of last-minute inclusions. I don't think that gives us a reason to delay an entire matter. If the Commission is ready to move on this, or not move on it, but to hear it, the individual, the party that sent this last-minute document, I'm sure is here and will explain their position, just like various other people will do in the course of the public hearing. I don't think it deserves any more weight than that.
Commissioner Ooster?
Well, I'm the one who made the request. There's quite a bit of additional material came in on this to me, starting Tuesday afternoon, end of evening, and more showed up this morning and yesterday. I wasn't able to get to any of it for the last two days until last night. So, I don't think I've had enough time to properly analyze this material, this last-minute material. I knew it's in the staff report, and I've been through all of that. And this matter seems to me to be important to this community, and that the people are trying to put in an asphalt plant, and everybody here who's interested in it deserves our best shot. There's another issue that was raised by CB Asphalt and Ford Construction in their appeal that can't be heard today anyway because it wasn't properly put on the agenda. That has to be continued for two weeks. Now, I'm reluctant to suggest that the matter be continued. I really don't like doing this because of all of the people that have showed up here. But as I said, I think you deserve our best shot, and I wish I could tell you that last night and this morning was enough for me to really get on top of what came in in the last two days. I'm afraid it's not. That's what I have to say.
Thank you.
If I could comment, I think, Mr. Ooster, that the new information from the applicant does, as I mentioned earlier, does relate to item two, not item one. And I think that would become clear during the course of the hearing. So, that's the fluid issue in my mind, is item number two, and I think that will become clear during the course of the hearings. So, I don't think, I think otherwise, the new information is, as I mentioned, in the nature of public comment, although it's written and it's from an organization, it's still in that, falls within that category. And there may be a party here that can explain the new information and what it relates to, if that would help Mr. Ooster.
So, I guess at this point, maybe we should just take, see if there's a motion and a second to continue the hearing?
I make the motion.
Is there a second? Okay, I guess the motion dies, so we will proceed on.
So, can we make a motion to hear number one and wait to hear number two to continue that one? Or maybe, or we could just go through number one and see where we're at?
The intent of the process was to address number one first, and then we'd open up number two separately.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So, our public hearing is 2015-329A, Appeal of Planning Director's Interpretation That An Asphalt Plant Is A Permitted Use In The General Industrial Zone, M2 Zone, And That No Conditional Use Permit Is Required For An Asphalt Plant At Hogan Quarry. There have been appeals by Calveras County Water District, My Valley Springs, and Joyce Tekel and John Walker of the Planning Director's Termination, That An Asphalt Concrete Batch Plant Is A Use permitted By Right In The General Industrial M2 Zone District, And An Asphalt Plant May Be Permitted At The Hogan Quarry, 3650 Hogan Dam Road, Valley Springs, APN 050-003-001 Without First Obtaining A Conditional Use Permit. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Peter.
Thank you. Peter Mallor, I'm the Planning Director. This is an appeal hearing, combined the appeals. We did receive a notice a couple days ago that CCWD has withdrawn their appeal, so any items associated with their appeal will not be heard today. They've withdrawn that appeal. This was precipitated by a request by Ford Construction of what kind of permits would be required to operate an asphalt plant at the Hogan Quarry, a site that's zoned, general industrial, M2.
Good honor, Chair. I came in a couple of minutes late, but did I miss the public comment period? I believe I should have called the public comment.
Yes, we already had the public comment period.
Did you have a chance? No, I know for each agenda item, but they were.
We have a public comment period at the very end, too.
You already went over Agenda Item Number C.
Yes, we did.
Public comment.
Yes, we did.
But G, do you have? The item is not on the agenda.
Oh, this one's on.
That's correct.
Yes. We haven't, no, we haven't gotten to the public comment period on this item.
No, I'm going to see.
We did, we did see.
No, I'm not.
Okay. I think it's back to you, Peter.
So, the question was whether or not the batch plant would be permitted. The original question was whether or not the batch plant was vested under their mining operation. The determination was that it was not vested. However, the, after research into the history of the ordinance, the language of the code, made a determination that the use is permitted by right. I want to remind the Commission that this is not a hearing on what we think it ought to be. It is a hearing on what we believe the ordinance says. It's not a legislative hearing, it's a quasi-judicial hearing based on the facts before us. We're not, we're not creating new legislation today and rewriting the ordinance what we think it ought to be. So, research that has been done has been based on what we think the code says, what we believe the intent of the Board was when the code was written, and it's, it's, so a narrow focus of the Planning Commission's review process today. So, the M2 zone states that uses that are allowed by right are those uses that are allowed by right in the M1 zone. The M1 zone allows 174002088, concrete mixing and batch plant, comma, ready mix. So, I looked at that, and I said, what does that really mean? Is asphalt listed anywhere else in the code? And it is not, other than reference to paving materials on road requirements in parking lots and those kinds of things. So, further research ran into what's the history of the ordinance and how did we get to this point? Originally, the first zoning ordinance adopted in 1961 stated that asphalt plants and concrete plants, separate uses, on a separate list, were both permitted by right in the M-zone. We only had one industrial zone at that point in time. In 1978, the ordinance was rescinded, and a new zoning ordinance took its place. At that point, ready mix was allowed use. Neither concrete nor asphalt plants were listed in the code. So, the question before me was, what was the intent of the Board at that point in time? Did they intend to limit ready mix to just Portland cement-type concrete, or was it intended to be all types of paving materials? My conclusion was that it was intended to be both. I understand that asphalt and Portland cement are different types of material, but that's not necessarily what my, it's not my opinion. It is what I believe the Board had intended. If the Board had intended that asphalt plants were different from a ready-mix plant, I believe they would have listed asphalt plant somewhere else in the code, either as a use permitted by right or a use requiring a conditional use permit. It is not listed. Further changes have gone on through the code over the years, and ready mix was replaced by the term that we use currently, and this was in 1986, and the county adopted two zoning ordinance, or, no, I'm sorry, that was done previously. The term ready mix was changed to concrete mixing and batch plants and ready mix. Again, there's no record in the history, you know, in the minutes or in the staff reports that we could find that suggested that the Board had intended that asphalt plants would be treated different than other types of paving material, concrete plants. The alternative interpretation that's been suggested by the appellant is that an asphalt plant falls under the term petrochemical, just trying to find the exact wording of it. Petrochemical drilling manufacturing processing and packaging. I looked at that and considered whether or not I felt that asphalt batch plant or asphalt mixing plant fell under that category, and I believe that that was intended to be the actual drilling for oil and the refining of oil and petrochemical products, not using a petrochemical product in some other type of manufacturing. This is really the crux of the issue before you, whether or not you believe that the intent of the Board, when the zoning ordinance was adopted, was that an asphalt plant fell under the rubric of a concrete mixing and batch plant or a petrochemical facility. We looked at the definition of ready mix. What does that mean? Ready mix is defined in our code, means mixing or batching of raw materials into concrete for delivery to job sites. Concrete, however, is not defined in our code. The definition of concrete in the dictionary reads, "An artificial stone-like material used for various structural purposes, made by mixing cement and various aggregates as sand, pebbles, gravel, or shale with water and allowing the mixture to harden, and any of various other artificial building or paving materials as those containing tar." Based on that, I made the determination that it was the Board's intent, based on construction of ordinances, that asphalt plant was intended to be included in the term, "Concrete mixing and batch plants, comma, ready mix." I then sent a letter to the, to Ford Construction, the representative stating that finding, stating that while we did not believe that the asphalt plant was vested under their mining operation, but that it was a use permitted by right and they could proceed. The next step in the process was for them to file an application for an authority to construct under the Environmental Control District, which is overseen by our Environmental Management Department. That is the subject of the second appeal, and I won't go into that at this point in time. An appeal was filed, or several appeals were filed, both by CCWD, which has subsequently been withdrawn, and the appellant's, Joyce Tekel and John Walker, representing MyValleySprings.com. There are a number of points that have been raised in their appeal, and I'll try to go through those. One of those is the authority for the Planning Director to make that type of determination, and whether or not that is subject to CEQA, the Act of Interpreting the Code, they believe is a project under CEQA. It is a routine action that the Planning Department takes on a daily basis to review the code, to make a determination on what uses are permitted by right, what require conditional use permits, and how the code is applied on a daily basis for all kinds of uses. Does a home being constructed meet the requirements? Are certain commercial uses allowed in the various commercial zones? This is a routine matter. However, this one issue sort of goes beyond the normal scope and scale of that type of activity. However, it is still within the realm of the Planning Department and the Planning Director to make that kind of determination. We do not believe that it is a discretionary act. There are court cases that support that, and we proceeded accordingly. Other issues raised were regarding existing permits for Hogan Quarry. Hogan Quarry is operating as a legal non-conforming use, grandfathered use. Its quarry operations started, predated our requirements for a use permit for mining operations. It predated the requirements for reclamation plan, or predated the requirements for a permit under the Surface Mining and Reclamation Act. It does have a reclamation plan. Even existing quarries were required under SMARA to get a reclamation plan. County processed a permit in 1990, 90015, that was the reclamation plan for the quarry. It has been mistakenly termed a mining use permit. It is not. There's been some confusion over the years as to what actual permits the quarry has. The only permit that's been issued is the reclamation plan, and that is 90-019. There have been other permits that have been applied for over the years, and there's been some additional confusion on that point. At one point in time, a former Planning Director suggested that they revise their permits, and a, an application was filed to add additional truck traffic to the operation. This was later determined to be unnecessary because it was found that they were grandfathered, they were legal non-conforming, and there were no restrictions on their existing truck traffic. Also, in 1993, there was a request to add an asphalt plant, and after some time, the Planning Director submitted a letter stating that it was a use permitted by right. So, this determination had actually been made previously by a former Planning Director. There had been other quarries and other requests for asphalt plants that applied to different sites with different zoning, and there was a letter that's been referred to in the appeal that states that the mining, that the mining operation did not permit an asphalt plant, and that was necessary for a revised use permit. That was accurate for that location, which was zoned A1, agricultural. Agricultural zoning does not allow asphalt plant without a conditional use permit. So, you need to make sure that we're aware of the different zoning, the different requirements for the different quarries throughout the county. In addition to support the finding that I made, we looked at, at other asphalt plants, you know, that have been approved. They're not operating in the county right now, but there have been six that have been authorized in the county since the ordinance was changed, and it's hard to imagine that the county intended to not permit asphalt plants, which would be the result of the interpretation that it's not permitted by right. It's not permitted at all because it's not listed even as a conditional use permit, if the county did authorize other asphalt plants in the county, including at the Hogan Quarry site without the requirement of a conditional use permit.
And that was the 93 application?
That was 93 application, yes. We also looked at, the issue's been raised about whether or not revisions to the reclamation plan is required, and in your staff report, there was a fairly thorough analysis.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mallor, can I interrupt?
Sure.
With respect to those six, they were all ministerial decisions?
No, no. There were two that were ministerial, there were four that were discretionary.
Is it relevant to explain the difference as to which was which and why?
If you like, the, the, the other four were on locations that either had a conditional use permit for their mining operation, either because of the zoning or because of the timeframe in which the mining use was established, and that the use permit did not eliminate that asphalt plant was permitted until they revised the permit to get that, or because of the zoning required a use permit for the mining operation.
And the two that were?
Two that were, were both zoned M2, and they happened to both be at this one same location.
The two that were, were both M2, the others were M1s?
Yeah, or A1.
A1.
Or some other, I have to have a little check.
A designation that no longer exists?
No.
No, A1's still, still there. So, there's, I'm sorry, there's two different sites. One is at the Allrock site in Calveritas, and that is zoned M2. The others were either zoned M2 or A1, but they were.
CUPs.
Inquired because they had a mining use permit.
Right.
That only identified those uses. So, when you have a use permit on a site, it constrains the other uses, even those uses that might be allowed by right, the use permit sort of supersedes of the other uses.
Right. So, in terms of apples to apples, the Allrock is the better example, is the, is the only relevant example?
Yes, yes. And that was in 1994, the county authorized the ability to put a asphalt plant. They never pursued it for whatever reason.
And was it the 93 application and approval that was the basis for the applicant's contention of vested right?
I do not know that. I don't know.
Thank you.
So, the question of not whether this, the construction operation of an asphalt plant would require revision to their reclamation plan has been raised. There's a five-step test, whether or not it's considered as a substantial deviation that's outlined in your staff report. Essentially, there's not a substantial increase in the disturbance of the surface area, it's not an extension of the time, termination date of that. The changes would not substantially affect the approved end use of the site and the consistency of any proposed change to the operation with the previously adopted environmental determination. A negative declaration was prepared, it's contained in this, in the report in one of the attachments, for the reclamation plan. It's important to note that the environmental document for a reclamation plan addresses the reclamation only. There's no, it doesn't address the use. Again, the use was permitted as a pre-existing legal non-conforming use of the site. And then the other changes, the lead agency deemed substantial deviations defined in the state law, and we didn't find that there were any other substantial deviations. So, we concluded that it would not require a revision to the reclamation plan for this use. Additional issue was raised was whether the, what the type of plant is? Is it a batch plant? Is it a continuous mixing plant? And there's been a lot of discussion back and forth in some of the documentation we received regarding the difference between the two. The conclusion is that our code allows concrete mixing and batch plant, so the reality doesn't really matter. It may matter as far as the actual operation itself, but as far as the code is concerned, whether it's a batch plant or a continuous drum plant, or whatever you want to call it, it's still an asphalt mixing plant, and therefore falls under the same definition as what I believe the code says. There have been a number of issues raised, legitimate issues, on the potential impacts associated with an asphalt plant, and if a conditional use were required, or any other type of environmental document associated with other permits that may be required, then these issues would need to be addressed. One of the issues is the potential impact on steelhead trout in the Calveras River, a federal listed endangered species. Regardless of whether or not the county requires a permit, they are responsible for abiding by state and federal laws regarding water quality, air quality, rare endangered plant, endangered species, any other laws associated with the operation of a, an asphalt plant. And so, the county is not responsible for implementing or ensuring that that law is abided by, by the applicant. abided by, by the applicant. Unless we are preparing an environmental document that then looks at all those issues, and then we refer to the state and federal agencies as responsible agencies to provide us input into the process. We don't know what the impact might be, if any, on the water quality of the river and whether or not there would be an incidental take of the fish. That has not been determined yet. There's statements that it will have an effect, and they will need a permit. We don't know that yet. They will need to look at their operations and how it may affect the water and how it may affect the river-
They being the relevant agencies?
They being the applicant, the proponent of the project, and work with those agencies and those permitting authorities, Regional Water Quality Control Board and Department of Fish and Wildlife, or Fish and Wildlife Service, the federal agency, to determine whether or not they need a permit from them. But that's not the county's responsibility to ensure that that is done, unless we become the lead agency on an environmental document. And then we would work with them as responsible agencies to make sure that any mitigation measures that would be added to an environmental document included potential impacts to endangered species. And this goes to all of the other environmental issues that are associated with this. Where there are other permitting agencies, the proponent is still responsible for ensuring that they meet those permit requirements. The fact that they may not require a conditional use permit does not alleviate the responsibility for them to get any other permits that are out there. So our conclusion was that the use is permitted under the zone based on our analysis and interpretation of the facts as we know it, and the appellant, in this case, disagree with that. And you'll have the opportunity here, their side of the rationale for their finding, and it'll be up to you to make that decision. So do you have any questions of me? Yes?
Okay, this might take a little while.
I'm sure.
The usage permitted under the current code is concrete mixing and batch plant ready mix.
Yes.
Which does not require a CUP.
That's correct.
And there is an argument that that's not where this falls. It falls under petrochemical drilling, manufacturing, processing, packaging.
Yes.
Which does require a CUP.
That's correct.
Okay, if you go back to the 1961 code, that's the one that allowed asphalt plant and concrete plant as permitted uses. That one also covered drilling for indoor removal of oil, gas, and refining of petroleum or its products, and those latter two required a use permit. Now, when you go to the current code, which I already covered, you also find a conditional use category of mineral extraction, processing and storage, and petrochemical storage. Now, is it fair to say that the current use that requires a CUP, the petrochemical drilling, et cetera, is kind of a descendant of the original 1961 category that also required a CUP for that same kind of stuff, while at the same time allowing asphalt plants as a permitted use? And so would that tend to support your conclusion that the current concrete mixing and batch plant ready mix does, in fact, include an asphalt plant?
I believe so, yes.
I was thinking about just giving a little overview of the procedures before we, since there was a question earlier, just about how the hearing is going to take place today. And we've had a presentation of the staff report. I will acknowledge this time, we did receive correspondence from Mr. Infascino and two rather lengthy packets from Abbott and Kinderman LLP. As we continue this, after the staff report, we are going to give the appellant an opportunity to make a presentation, a minimum of probably 15 minutes. We're going to be a little deliberate with that. At that point, we will give the proponent the same amount of time. And after that, then we will invite public comments. And at that point, I'm probably going to ask for a raise of hands, so people that are going to want to speak, so that we can get a gauge on how many people, and then determine the time limit, which we have from, an allowance from three to five minutes per person, so we'll just see how many people there want to speak. After that, there are rebuttals, and then we'll close the public hearing, and then we'll bring it back to the Planning Commission for deliberation and decision. I also just want to say, because we heard a little bit earlier, you know, that, you know, please hold your comments and be respectful of the commission and everyone else in the audience today. I am, can guarantee you're going to hear things that you don't like to hear, and things that make you satisfied and happy. But whatever those might be and those conditions, whichever side you're on, I would please ask you to hold your comments. You'll have the opportunity at the podium. And lastly, that in terms of who you're addressing today, it's not each other. It's the commissioners here at the podium, and as our past president said, we are the deciders. So you need to direct all of your comments to us and not to each other. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Peter.
So unless there's any other questions that you have of me at this point in time, I would say let's ask the appellant to come up and present.
Okay. So I would like to ask the appellant, at this point, to come up and make a presentation.
My name is Mark Gallagher, and I represent the appellant in this matter, and I'd like you to introduce yourself as well, please.
I'm Joyce Tekel, president of mybellisprings.com.
I listened to the presentation of the planning director, and I agree with the very first thing he said. And that is, least for this agenda item, perhaps the best focus is a narrow one, simply on the language. In other words, instead of addressing whether we should do this, the question is, can it be done? So what I've done is, I'm going to forego the presentation I planned to give and focus simply on that very narrow question of, under the current version of the code, whether this can be allowed without a conditional use permit. Because I think even with that very narrow focus, the analysis falls apart, and it becomes obvious that asphalt is different than concrete. In fact, they're as different as apples and oranges. Because when you look at the code section, not only is the plain language clear, the word "concrete" is used, asphalt is not. But when you look at the legislative history, going back more than 50 years, when you look at basic canons of statutory construction, in other words, what do judges use? What tools are in their toolbox to determine what a statute means? And when you look at case law, all of those lead to the inescapable conclusion that asphalt is different than concrete. Let's begin with the legislative history. In 1961, as has been pointed out, the county code used both terms, asphalt and concrete. In fact, Section 9 of the code at that time identified uses allowed in subsection A. Subsection 3 listed the uses allowed. Airports, helicopters, landing strips for aircraft, bottling works, carpenter shops, contractors' yards, lumber yards, asphalt plant, boat repair, building materials, canary, lumber mill, machine shop, sand gravel, concrete plants. I won't go on to list everything else. But as of 1961, there was a recognition in this county that asphalt was different than concrete. And that recognition lasted almost 20 years until 1978. Here's what the code said in 1978. It lists permitted uses. In the 1978 version of the code, we're looking at Article 36. The citations are contained in the written materials that we submitted. Then we go on to discuss uses subject to a conditional use permit. And subsection D of that section, which is 3604, states ready mix plants. So at that point, the two were apparently combined under the heading of something that a conditional use permit was required for. So in other words, we had them separated before, now they're combined under the one heading, and that lasted from 1978 until 1986. In 1986, we make another change, or you make another change. And under 1986, we're under Chapter 1740, where permitted uses are listed as concrete mixing and batch plant ready mix. So the analysis would go something like this if we were talking about apples and oranges. From 1961 to 1978, you did not need a permit to sell apples or oranges in this county. From 1978 to 1986, you needed a permit to sell both apples and oranges in the county. In 1986 to the present, you did not need a permit to sell apples. The conclusion is obvious. You do need the permit to sell the oranges, because apples and oranges are different, just as concrete and asphalt are different, as has been recognized by this county 50 years ago. The idea that somehow, from the 1960s to the 1970s, we were able to differentiate asphalt and concrete, but now that we live in the information age, we're getting lazy and saying, well, concrete means everything, is simply ludicrous, and it doesn't hold up to the legislative history, and it doesn't hold up to the plain language. But even if there was some room for equivocation, even if it wasn't perfectly clear, looking at the legislative history, when we apply basic canons of statutory construction to figure out what the legislative intent is, it becomes even more clear that asphalt is not allowed, and that asphalt and concrete are different. Judges long ago realized that, hey, guess what? Sometimes Congress gets it wrong, and sometimes the legislature gets it wrong. And as judges, it's their job to figure out what these folks meant. That's a difficult task. And rather than judges just kind of give their own gut feeling as to what the legislator might have meant, long ago, what are called canons of statutory construction were developed. What is it we look at to figure out what our elected officials meant to say when they wrote this statute, oftentimes which is gobbledygook? Well, a number of those canons have now been codified in the California Civil Code. The idea being, these are so important, we want judges to go here first. And the very first one is the one that's most applicable here, and it can be found at California Code of Civil Procedure 1958. And I'm going to read it in its entirety, because I think it's extremely applicable to the situation we have here. "In the construction of a statute or instrument, the office of the judge is simply to ascertain and declare what is in terms of insubstance contained therein, not to insert what has been omitted, or to omit what has been inserted. And where there are several provisions or particulars, such a construction is, if possible, to be adopted as will give effect to all." Let me read that middle part again, because it's directly applicable here. "A judge or anyone else interpreting the statute," and that's what we are engaged in here today, "is not to insert what has been omitted, and is not to omit what has been inserted." The word asphalt has been omitted in the most recent version of the statute. From 1961 to 1978, apparently everyone in the county knew what asphalt was. Now, the idea is either we all got real stupid, or in enacting the 1986 version, they intentionally omitted the term. And under this canon of statutory construction, the court's analysis would end. There was a prior version of the statute that used two words. There is a current version of the statute that only uses one. The result and the conclusion is inescapable. But let's not stop there, because there are many others. The next one, and I'm just guessing at the Latin pronunciation here, so bear with me, but I'm going to go with expresio unius. E-X-P-R-E-S-S-I-O, next word, big U-N-I-U-S. And that means simply that the expression of one thing suggests the exclusion of others. So when Congress or any legislative body makes a list, there are some things that are on the list, and there are some things that ain't. The idea being, they probably knew what they were doing, and given the state of our elected officials, maybe that's giving them too much credit, but at least that's the assumption. And if they knew what they were doing, and they were listing stuff, and they list stuff off the list, that probably meant that they didn't want it on the list. It's really not that different than a grocery shopping list. If my wife gives me a list that has milk and eggs and vegetables, she probably didn't want me to buy beer. It's really the same analysis here. I'd have to focus what's on my list, or I'd get in a lot of trouble. I don't know that you'll be in a lot of trouble, but the same analysis should apply. We have a third statute of statutory instruction, and that is, unless there's a definition provided in the statute, we should rely on the basic dictionary definition. The planning director gave us the definition of the word concrete. Nowhere in that definition did the word asphalt apply. I have a very similar definition from Webster's, and it defines concrete as follows. "A hard, strong building material made by mixing cement material as Portland cement, and mineral aggregate as sand and gravel with sufficient water to cause the cement to bind." No mention is made in that definition of asphalt. And in fact, I went to my thesaurus to look for synonyms, I think it's synonyms that are the ones that sound the same, it's synonyms or anonyms, to look for synonyms for the word concrete. I had this much text in my thesaurus, and the word asphalt appeared nowhere. So not only does the dictionary recognize that they're different, but when you're looking for another word for asphalt, Webster's isn't going to tell you, another word for concrete, Webster's isn't going to tell you to use asphalt. It'll give you 20 other words, but that ain't one of them. So under all three canons of statutory construction, this idea that somehow the word concrete can be defined broadly enough to include asphalt is simply wrong. Finally, we have case law to guide us in our analysis somewhat. Sometimes lower court judges get it wrong, goes up to the Court of Appeals, and they have to straighten it out. Well, not surprisingly, those folks too have recognized that when a statute initially lists a number of factors, and then is either amended or changed, and some of those factors drop out, the intent was obvious. We meant to change it. That's why we're using different words. The best example from California doesn't involve mining or concrete or asphalt. In fact, it involves eyeglasses, but the analysis is exactly the same. In the 1950s, the legislature passed a law that said, if you're an optometrist, and you open up an office, and then you sell, remove, or abandon your office, your right to continue conducting business at that office has been terminated. Later on, the statute was amended to say simply, if you sell the office. So in other words, the term abandonment and removal dropped out of the statutory scheme. When the court addressed the issue of what the statute meant, in judicial parlance, it essentially said, hey, this is a no-brainer. It used to say one thing, now it says something different. The intent is obvious. They meant to change it. Here's how they said it, though. The court held that, quote, "The rejection by the legislator of a specific provision contained in the act as originally introduced is most persuasive to the conclusion that the act should not be construed to include the omitted provision." And the name of that case is Rich versus State Board of Optometry, 1965, 235, CalAps 2nd. App. 2nd, it's 607. Real easy conclusion. It used to have these two words, now it does not. We recognize that the legislator probably knew what it was doing, therefore, we refuse to read these two words into the statute. It's the same with concrete and asphalt. It used to have both, now it doesn't. I found another case, and I think it's interesting, because it shows just how seriously courts take these rules of statutory construction, because sometimes, the way a statute should be construed, isn't necessarily the way you would want it to be construed. And the best example I found comes from a case in Florida. In that case, Florida passed a law called the Dangerous Sexual Felony Offender Act. Under the original version of the law, it stated that if you had a prior conviction for committing rape, or attempted rape, and then you got a second conviction, you would get a life sentence in prison. That was the version of the law that existed in 1999. In 2003, the law was changed, and the word attempt was taken out. So the law now required a prior felony conviction of actually going through and committing the crime, not merely attempting to commit the crime. Mr. Felder was convicted, in fact, he pled no contest, to raping a 12-year-old girl. The court recognized he should spend the rest of his life in prison. But the court also recognized that his hands were tied, because his previous conviction was for an attempt. And although the court desperately wanted to, and in fact says, look, we all recognize this guy should spend the rest of his life in prison, because the previous version of the statute held attempting or committing the crime, and then it was amended, and the word attempt went away, we cannot interpret the statute the way we desperately want to, and that's to send him away for the rest of his life. In other words, they took the canons of statutory construction so seriously, that they reached a result that everybody recognizes is inequitable. And here's what the court said about that. Although finding that there is no doubt that he is a dangerous sexual offender, we reverse the life sentence, because the removal of the attempted language manifested a clear legislative intent that not to include attempts as convictions which would trigger the life sentence. So in that case, the court did the right thing, even though it achieved the wrong result. What we're looking at here really does pale in comparison. And I understand there's a lot of passion on this issue, and I in no mean way to demean the importance of this issue. But the point I am trying to make is, we are bound by the language of the statute, whether we like it or not, regardless of what the results are. And I understand there's quite a bit of material that's coming in, and you people are going to be under an avalanche of public comment on this. And there's going to be a lot of points raised, good or bad. Should we do it? Should we not? Don't even need to address it, because under the current version of the statute, using all the methods of statutory construction, asphalt ain't concrete. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions? No, please. One more. Wait. Will you guys hear a minute or less?
I have a question.
Yes, and please no clapping.
Sorry, no one ever clapped before, I thought that meant I got to leave.
No one ever questioned you before?
No, no one ever clapped for me before. I get questioned all the time. I just don't get applause. I was thrown off. I apologize.
In your, in your research, did you, talk about definitions, did you look up the word asphaltic concrete?
I looked up the word concrete, I did not look up the term asphaltic concrete. I don't even know.
Did you accidentally run across it in your, in your research of the word concrete?
I did not. And in fact, before I read the report, I'd never heard the term asphaltic concrete. I looked up the definition of the word concrete, because that's sort of what the rule dictates. What's the everyday meaning of the term concrete? I did not look up either asphaltic concrete, or even asphalt, nor did I stumble across the definitions of the word.
So you didn't come across the same dictionary definition that Mr. Mallard did, and that he cited in his report?
I did not.
Okay. Are you suggesting, Mr. Gallagher, that because the word asphalt does not appear in the current version of the code, other than with respect to paving roads and the like, that our county codes do not allow, and was the intent of the prior bodies, to disallow an asphalt plant mixing batch plant continuous whatever, in this county, under any circumstances?
No, no. The code makes very clear, there are those things for which no permit is needed, and there are those things for which a permit is needed.
So previous approvals of asphalt plants in the county were wrong?
It would depend on if they were subject to receiving a conditional use permit.
So previous decisions with respect to approval of asphalt plants without conditional use permits was erroneous?
Let me answer your question this way. If those asphalt plants were approved after 1986 without a conditional use permit, yes, that decision was rendered an error.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Mr. Stone?
Did I understand you to say that under the 1978 version of the code, a permit was required for both concrete plants and asphalt plants?
Well, here's, here's what the code says, and it's, it's a bit confusing, so I'll give you the exact section and tell you exactly what I'm reading. It's 3604, uses subject to a conditional use permit D, ready mix plants. Word concrete or asphalt doesn't appear in this version. Ready mix plants, as I understood, and unfortunately, there's not a lot of legislative history where folks are explaining, hey, this is why we use that word, and this is why we use that word. But it's my, but my guess would be ready mix plants without either modifier, without concrete or asphalt would encompass both.
Okay, now if you go to.
Excuse me, just for the record, you're referring to the M1 zone with 3604? 36, 3802? Article 38 is the heavy industrial zone, the M2 zone?
Correct.
Which allows any use enumerated in 3804, excluding residential uses, as used permitted by right in the M2 zone?
Correct.
So a ready mix plant was a permit allowed by right in the M2 zone, not a conditional use permit? You're referring to the M1 zone when you read 3604?
Right, 3604 is the M1 zone, that is correct.
Right, and we're talking about the M2 zone here?
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure that fact was.
I'm sorry, your question?
Well, it was actually the same as planning directors, because wouldn't it be true then, under 1978 code, under section 38.02, a ready mix plant was a use permitted as of right? And we now understand that ready mix plants included both asphalt and concrete?
Any use not enumerated in 3804? Manufacturing. That's correct.
So wouldn't that tend to support the planning director's conclusion, that under the 1986 version of the code, that uses the word ready mix without differentiating, just like the one in 1978 did, that that includes both asphalt and concrete?
It would if the word concrete weren't reintroduced into the 1986 code, because it precedes, concrete, well, I'll give you the exact language of the 1986 code. Concrete mixing and batch plant, comma, ready mix. So I don't believe that they would reintroduce the word concrete if they meant that to apply to both concrete and asphalt, given that in previous versions of the code, they used both terms specifically.
I understand.
Did you look up the definition of batch plant?
I did not.
Because I did, and I also called a couple of contractors and said, where do you get your asphalt? Every one of them said batch plant. So I took the time to look it up in the definition. The first, in every, every dictionary describes it as asphalt, and then second, they describe it as concrete.
Well, again, I would focus on the language that begins with concrete mixing and batch plant. I think that concrete would apply to both mixing and batch plant in that sense.
It says and.
Correct.
Concrete mixing and batch plants.
Right, but I don't think.
Would it not be fair to look at the word batch plant, to learn perhaps what Mr. Butert has learned?
I don't, I don't think in isolation, I don't think you would say, I don't think it would be grammatically correct to say concrete mixing and concrete batch plant.
But you did, because you only looked up concrete, so that is in isolation. So if you looked up the word batch plant, asphalt is everywhere.
You previously said that the ready mix plant includes asphalt.
Under the previous, correct. But here we have the specific word.
So you're saying that the definition of ready mix, or the intended use of ready mix, changed from one year to the.
No, I am saying that the current version of the code specifically says concrete mixing and batch plant. I read that to mean concrete mixing and concrete batch plant.
So you added a word.
But you've added a word.
I did not. It's right there, number eight, concrete mixing.
And, and batch plants.
Correct.
But you added concrete to the word batch plant.
I think that's a grammatically correct reading of the rule, sir. I think it's concrete mixing, you wouldn't say concrete mixing and concrete batch plant. It's concrete mixing and batch plant. If the intent was for asphalt, why wouldn't they use the term asphalt?
The intent was for concrete only, why wouldn't they, why would they, why wouldn't they write concrete in there?
They did. They begin the sentence with concrete. I believe that concrete modifies the entire sentence.
What about the word ready mix, though, that's separated from the rest of it by a comma? Wouldn't it be reasonable to conclude that ready mix means the same thing in the 1986, the 1993 versions, as it did in 1978, when we've already established it included asphalt plants?
I don't believe so, not with concrete being specifically identified, but not the term asphalt being reintroduced.
Are you using concrete as a noun modifier for the rest, everything that, that follows?
Correct.
So I think we're.
You can disagree, I think my analysis is grammatically correct.
Okay, thank you, I will disagree.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
We may have more later.
Thank you, I'll be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'd now like to invite the project proponent.
Good morning, my name is Diane Kinderman with the law firm Abbott and Kinderman. Our address in Sacramento is 2121 First Street, and I represent the respondents to this appeal, both Ford Construction and CB Asphalt. And what we're passing out is just another copy of the brief, the response that we submitted on Tuesday to everyone, and it's just another copy to have in front of you in the event that you didn't have a chance to print yours out. And then the pink paper is simply the, the few slides that we have that we're going to walk through today. And I will say, the reason it was submitted on Tuesday, which I know is late, is we were working very quickly and efficiently with staff pursuant to a Public Records Act request to get some records that we needed to be able to respond to everything. So, so having said that, I would, I'd like to get started. I'd be happy to address this issue we've just been talking about, if you want me to go out of order of my presentation for a moment, but I always first want to thank staff of several different departments who were very helpful to us in helping us respond to a Public Records Act request, and, and just responding to our questions. Everybody was prompt and courteous, professional, and we always appreciate that, and want the commission to know that we appreciate that, both our firm and our clients do. So I want to make sure you knew it. But very briefly, on the subject of statutory construction, statutory construction does not exist in a vacuum. A court, as well as a commission, will always look at how terms are used in an industry, and how experts in the industry utilize those terms. And in fact, the industry practice is to combine those terms. And if you look at page, pages nine and 10 and what have you of our brief, we walk through our analysis of the statutory construction, and we come to the same conclusion that the planning director does as well, that those terms are used interchangeably. And also, Calaveras County's interpretation is consistent with federal transportation authorities, other jurisdictions in California, including Los Angeles, other cities, and other states, including Arizona, Missouri, Texas, Virginia, and on and on. So statutory construction does not exist in a vacuum. And if you want to look at our analysis, we'll get to that in a moment, but it's at page nine, our interpretation of how your ordinances were interpreted for these, for these terms, and how the terms are used interchangeably. So with that, what I'm going to do are two things first. I would like to go through this site plan of the quarry, if the commission is interested, just to show the layout. This is a site plan that is being submitted to the State Water Resources Control Board, the Regional Water Quality Control Board, for compliance with the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, which, as of July 1st of this year, all industrial operators have to submit new stormwater permits, and/or they're called SWIPs. So it's a stormwater protection plan, also called a SWIP. So this is a map that is outlining the SWIP, and I'll go through it in a moment. The second thing I'm going to do is just talk a little bit about how a hot mix asphaltic plant works. So starting with this specific site plan here, it's, it's basically a perimeter site plan of the whole Hogan Dam Quarry. And as I said, it's being included in the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, or the SWIP. So the red line here shows the facility perimeter. Oops, there we go. And the employee parking and the entrance and exit are right up here in the northeast corner. There's the entrance and exit, and we've got employee parking, and I'm going to move slowly along the west, to the west here. And what we come to is, oh, I'll stop here. These brown markings show areas where, under the reclamation plan, they're allowed to keep stockpiled material, in the event they need to stockpile it for a period of time. Moving westerly along the northern border, we come up to where equipment maintenance and the material storage pad is located. Excuse me? Something upside down?
It is.
No? No, it's not.
There's the Calaveras River, right?
Right up here. There's the Calaveras River. There's the northern boundary. All right. So the oil and store, oil storage and diesel tanks are kept and contained in covered structures, and with regard to the diesel tanks specifically, it's double-walled and cement-lined. And that's just way up in this corner here. And the way these materials are stored is consistent with requirements of the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and the best management practices in the industry to ensure the protection of water quality, so that if there's a leak in the tank, it would be Moving south, along the property, and then east again, there's some equipment storage down here, but that's not any substance, it's just generalized equipment, not any liquid And then, moving east further, this is where the asphaltic batch plant would be located. Let me move over here a bit, there we go, right, right over here. This is almost two-thirds of a mile from the Calaveras River. It's 2,100 some odd feet, maybe almost two-thirds, a little over half, from the Calaveras River. The other thing, these blue arrows coming from the material storage area, and from the asphaltic batch plant, show how stormwater has been directed to flow into the quarry pit, so there would be no off-site flow or discharge of stormwater from this particular drainage quadrant. It would all go into the quarry pit. So if some unusual accident were to happen, and all these different checkberms, which our best management practices didn't work, it would still flow into the quarry pit, and not off-site. And same here. Any material, which there wouldn't be any, and I'll explain in a moment, would flow towards the quarry pit. And so this is being presented by July 1st to the Regional Water Quality Control Board as part of the SWIP. So does the commission have any questions about the facility map right now, before I move on to just how the plant operates? Okay?
Excuse me, but was, was the quarry pit a design feature from day one, and if so, for what reason?
And same here, any material, which there wouldn't be any, and I'll explain in a moment, would flow towards the quarry pit. And so this is being presented by July 1st to the Regional Water Quality Control Board as part of the SWP. So, does the commission have any questions about the facility map right now before I move on to just how the plant operates? Okay?
Excuse me, but was, was the quarry pit a design feature from day one, and if so, for what reason?
Well, the quarry pit is where they extract the material from, and it's part of how they defined they're going to start their extraction activities here, and it will eventually would be reclaimed, but this is the primary area where the material is extracted from.
Oh, okay, I guess what I was getting at was, forget asphalt for a moment, we're just talking about extraction of rock and crushing it in there for-
Just the rock, yeah, and the crushing occurs right here.
Okay, is there anything about the design of the quarry that deliberately creates a sloping effect so that, let's say, mud or sand runoff or something like that would collect in a, in a-
Yes, and that's why-
Rather than going off-site?
Correct, and that's why the arrows are pointing this direction, because it's been designed, the drainage has been designed to ensure that it goes into this area and not off-site, these areas. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah.
I just, you're about halfway through your time, Ms. Kinderman.
All right. Okay, so the next item that I just want to mention is, talk about what is a hot mix asphalctic concrete batch plant, and how does it operate? I think there's been some misinformation about this. So it's essentially a unit used to combine dried aggregate, which is taken from the site, and I'm sorry, this is not up on the, on the board at this time, or on the, on the screen, but it heats and dries the aggregate that comes from the quarry, and then it's combined and mixed with a preheated liquid, liquid asphalctic binder. The liquid asphalctic binder comes from off-site, and there's only so much brought onsite for the amount that's going to be needed for that particular day for the project. There is none of that material stored onsite. The mix is then combined and it's transferred to an enclosed system into a truck and taken off-site. So there is no kind of petroleum mixture that's left or stored on the site. It's brought in, mixed under heat with the rock, and then immediately taken off-site that day to the job location, for its final product could be a paving operation for roadway, parking lot, driveway, there is no onsite storage of the hot mix asphalt. In fact, it's deemed so safe to water quality that it's utilized to line and insulate water conveyance facilities and ditches and canals. So the environmental concerns, talking about the liquid asphalt binder and the finished hot mix product, they have to be kept hot in order to create the mix, and if they're exposed to ambient temperatures, if there were a spill, it would solidify. It has to be kept at 325 degrees Fahrenheit all the way to the job site. Once it's exposed to the ambient temperatures, it solidifies. So even if there were some accident at the location of the batch plant, the material would solidify, it wouldn't flow anywhere. The other aspect of environmental concern here is that it's a state-of-the-art facility, and it's outfitted with a baghouse, which is the best available control technology to ensure that there are no particulate matters released as a result of the operation of the plant. So it reduces air pollution emissions, and in fact, when this particular plant was tested in Calaveras County, the emissions were less than half the permit limits allowed by Calaveras County. So we're confident that when the Cal-, I'm sorry, Siskiyou County, so we're confident that when it's tested in Calaveras County, similarly, the emissions will be seen to be extremely low as well from this plant, which is indicated as a state-of-the-art. So on my, on the screen here, and I realize I only have a short amount of time left, what we wanted to do was walk through, you know, the seven arguments that were raised by the appellant. And the first point here really are background facts regarding the Hogan Quarry and the instant appeal, and I think we can move on from that, I think we know what the background facts are here. And so the second point is our belief that the planning director had correctly interpreted the concrete mixing and batch plant as including both the asphalctic concrete and the Portland cement-type concrete. And I think we've discussed that very thoroughly as well, that not only do you look at statutory interpretation, which in our view supports the planning director's decision, but you also look at how it's used in the industry, the terms of art in the industry, and a court would give great weight to that, and so should the commission in this case. The third item is something raised, that was a 1993 Board of Supervisor agenda item that was raised by the appellant in their papers, that in reality, what they cited supports our position. And the reason is, they, and they repeated this in their supplemental letter as well, but the 1993 agenda item is distinguishable from this one because it didn't involve an M2 zone and instead involved an existing CUP for mining operations. And in that gen-, in that specific item, the 1993 item, the planning director specifically said, "Public and sequel review would not be required for the proposed additional use, i.e. the asphalctic batch plant, if it were designated as a permitted use. Permitted uses would not require a public hearing. For example, concrete batch plants are designated as permitted uses in the M1 and M2 zones. Therefore, if the mine were in these zones, the addition of the processing facilities would not require the use permit." So in reality, what the appellant's identified as something to be interpreted against our position, it actually supports the planning director's interpretation here. Subsequent to that, in 1994, the planning director found another hot asphalctic plant was a permitted use, and then under item number four in 2004, the planning department similarly took the position that asphalctic concrete batch plants are permitted at the Hogan Quarry. So there is a history of the county recognizing this in accordance with their own ordinances. And then, number five is the whole discussion about the, how asphalctic batch plants are excluded by the code. We say it's refuted by the historical changes in the code, that's outlined in page nine of our, of our materials. Item number six, appellant's argue that the chemical composition of asphalt is, that asphalt concrete is different from Portland cement concrete, it's really unavailing, fails to show any error in the planning director's determination, so we can easily dismiss with that particular comment. Here's another important one, item number, Roman numeral number seven. The appellant's argue that an asphalctic batch plant involves petrochemical manufacturing and processing, but they're confused by the two different industrial processes. The petrochemical manufacturing process happens off-site when they make the liquid asphalt binder, which is then taken onto the site and mixed with the material from the quarry. So that petrochemical process does not happen on the site, it happens off-site, it's made, and then it's brought to the site and mixed with, with the rock. So we can dispense with the appellant's argument in that regard as well, because they confuse the two processes. And then, Roman numeral number eight is part of the discussion we've already had about legislative history, and it also has to do with appellant's attempting to kind of bring some legal distinction out of industry terms such as drum mix plants, batch mix plants, and continuous mix plants. And in reality, because it's called a continuous mix plant, it doesn't mean it's running 24 hours a day, it just means that it keeps moving during that period of time during the day when you are mixing the material to take it off-site for that specific use on that particular day. It doesn't mean that it runs 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So once again, they're kind of mixing industry terms and not looking at how, in reality, the industry views these specific, the specific verbiage. And then, finally, Roman numeral number nine, the staff report contained a couple statements that were of concern to us, they're either incorrect or irrelevant, and in particular, we contend that the planning director did not make a vested right determination that the hot asphalctic concrete plant was not within the vested right of Hogan Quarry, because in the letter, he said it was a moot issue. And so moot means it's lacking in legal significance, so that was a cue to us that there was nothing to appeal, because it wasn't really addressed. So that is one thing that we do refute in the staff report, and we're very interested in the planning commission making a finding on that as well. So item number 10, are the requested findings we would ask of the planning commission. First, we would like the commission to affirm the planning director's use determination as to the hot asphalctic concrete plant in the M2 zone as a matter of right, and that no conditional use permit is required. Second, please deny the appeal in its entirety. And third, affirm that the issue of whether or not hot asphalctic concrete plant falls within a vested right for Hogan Quarry, that that really was not determined by the planning director's April 30th letter, because he said it was moot, and it was, there was nothing from which we would have appealed. Are there any questions?
I'm sorry, one second. I don't know what that is, what the little jingling is. Oh, thank you. Are there any questions of the commission, of Ms. Kinderman?
Could you go back to item number nine, please?
Yes.
I think I zoned out when you were explaining this, would you please do that, do so again?
All right, so in the staff report, we agree with just about everything in the staff report, except there is a particular statement in which they said that in the planning director's April 30th letter, that was a determination, a final appealable determination, that the batch plant is not a vested right, that it's not a part of vested right of the quarry. And in reality, we did not interpret the letter that way, because while it was somewhat discussed, it says, it doesn't matter, the issue is moot, because in reality, it's allowed under the zoning ordinance. So we agree it's allowed under the zoning ordinance-
But you're reserving a right to, to-
If we needed to appeal that-
I understand, okay.
We didn't, because of the word moot, we took that as, well, there wasn't a formal determination.
I understand.
So we would just like that clarified.
Thank you.
And on that, it's my understanding that we couldn't make a determination on vesting, on the vesting rights, because it wasn't publicly noticed, so I don't think that we will be-
Correct, correct.
Delving into that issue today.
Correct, correct, thank you. Any other questions?
Question for the chair?
I'm sorry, we're proceeding, you can, we're getting to public comment here in a moment. Well, thank you very much, we may have more questions of you later.
May I just ask one request? We have several people in support of our position who are not really prepared to come up and speak, would like to give you a show of hands. Would you permit that if we asked that, or is that something you would do later, or do you not permit that?
We could probably accommodate that.
At this time, or later?
Not right now, I think.
All right, let me know when.
All right, thank you.
Thank you kindly, appreciate it.
I have a question on point.
Could you, actually, I'm going to ask some members of the public to come up and speak, or actually, let me ask a show of hands of people that would like to speak regarding this issue. Okay. So if this gentleman has a question, why don't you just come on up and you can ask your question on point, and you can make your presentation?
Gregory Gustafson, former planning commissioner. This concerns me that numerous trucks will be coming and going. If we could have approximate calculation, I hear we have to bring trucks in with the asphalt, that truck has to leave, and there has to be trucks loaded and then exited. Is there a quotation from the Ford people, how many trucks a day they estimate to create 3,000 tons of material? And could they answer to me the definition of fast-tracking, bypassing, and avoiding hurdles, which were words that were never used when I was on the planning commission?
Thank you very much. Looks like you're next.
Thank you very much. I'm not real schooled in all of this stuff.
Could you state your name, my respondent, I live on Double Springs. Thank you, Bonnie.
And I just wanted to say, just because deciders in the past have okayed certain things, doesn't mean the things they've okayed have been okay. So all the past stuff is irrelevant, because as far as I'm concerned, so much more has been learned about exposure to certain substances now than there were back in the 60s or the 80s, that we need to look from here on forward. And I have found it so hard for people to say that they've made a mistake, and it's especially hard in my life, I've noticed that men can never say they've ever made a mistake. So what I want to know is, the difference between concrete and asphalt, as far as I'm concerned, is a substance called bitumen. It's not in concrete, but it's definitely in asphalt. And it's the black tarry stuff, that I would like to know, where are we getting the bitumen? What county are we mining it or digging it, and what form does it take? And I find that it's transported in liquid. My God, last week, there was a tanker in Sacramento that crashed at an intersection with black tarry stuff covering cars and people, and anyway, how is it processed? Is it dug up in rocks, and is it crushed, and where is it done? And when it's transported, apparently it comes hot to us in a, in a tanker? How's it handled once it gets here? And are the same trucks that deliver this binder, this black tarry stuff, the same trucks that take it out to the, to the construction sites? My main concern is, we know that the mine for gravel is here, but where is the mine for bitumen? They should be processing this stuff in the area where they're digging up the stuff. Don't bring it to Calaveras County. We've got enough toxic waste dumps all around already from the old mining days, and to introduce this without the concern of the people that live around here and are going to live here for a while, as long as we can live here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newman.
Yeah, my name is Barack Estes, I live directly across from the quarry at 3680 Laurent Lane. I have a series of four questions that I wish some of the planning commissioners had asked, and I'll leave them with you when I'm done, because I see you as the representatives of us, the citizens and taxpayers. So far, I've been seeing a lot of talk about what can we do for this company, and little of what should we do. So let me try and give you an overview from a person who lives in the affected neighborhood. May I ask how many of you are familiar with the topography of what I call Harper Valley, the area where the quarry is? Do you pass through there much?
Yes.
It's a bowl, it's a bowl. The quarry is, is, has about 50 feet of sheer cliff behind it, of which they're mining from that cliff. All around, there are high hills. If you come up Silver Rapids from 26, you get to Huckleberry, now you're going down. You turn left on Laurent, it's one block, and the second half of the block goes up. Halfway down is Harper Street, Dead End Street, that goes parallel Silver Rapids towards the quarry. Now, it may be that in 1961, that this was an industrial-use area, and one of my questions applies to that, but approximately 30 years ago, a residential neighborhood began to be developed there, that is, that was finished and developing in 20 years, 20 years ago. So you're dealing with a quarry up on the hill, a whole bunch of hills surrounding it, and a valley with approximately 20 houses, of which there are approximately 20 to 25 kids, active outdoor kids who are outside every day. Now, if you're familiar with a bowl, you'll know that the small problems in LA and Denver are the worst, because they're bowls, they're surrounded by hills. Everything has no pollution, has nowhere to go but down into the valley. Whereas in the Bay Area, San Francisco, San Jose pollution winds up in Fresno, because the winds come in and just blow it out. This is much more similar to Denver and Detroit. I'm not going to take your time by telling you exactly how outdoorsy and athletic these kids are. I did put that in my opinion piece in the Calaveras Enterprise, and you could drive down that street at any time, and you'll see it. Last night was my watering night, I was out late until almost 9 o'clock, and the kids across the street were still out there playing ball, and all I was hearing was "whack, whack, whack." Now, you've got to ask yourself, now that we have what essentially is not just an industrial area, it's a residential area right next to it, totally affected by what goes on. The noise in the morning is unbelievable. When they dynamite, my house shakes, but I knew that going in. A hot asphalt plant is something else, and you've got to ask yourself, am I going to look out for those other people who are there now? And I contend that had they put a hot asphalt plant there in 1961, the neighborhood would never have been built. And if they built it, no one would have bought the houses. It's the last neighborhood in that area of town. It was put there because for 20 years, there was not a hot asphalt plant. It was put there because for 20 years, there was not a hot asphalt plant. There was a rock quarry. And that simply was noise and some trucking. And people bought the homes. And now, we're looking at a real major change that could affect, not necessarily me, I'm not going to be here that long, but those kids out there every day, the kid on his trampoline, the little girl on her bicycle, those kids are going to be breathing whatever is in there. And some of my questions have to go to that. I'll ask them myself if you want, or I'll pass them to you. It's your choice. I have four of them. One for Mr. Maurer.
Well, you can go ahead and ask your questions, and then we'll write them down, and I'm sure we'll get to them.
I wondered, Mr. Maurer, in your presentation, you described the quarry as being in an M1 industrial zone. Can you define for us the parameters of that industrial zone as it relates to the residential zone next to it? Either geographically, whatever? And, in your opinion, does what occurs on that industrial zone, including the spewing of particulate matter, need to be confined to that industrial zone? Or may it freely float into a residential zone? And you can answer them whenever you want. As far as questions, I wish you had asked the representative, and perhaps you will. Will there be a smokestack constructed? Because if so, and if it's going to get out of the valley there, it's going to have to be at least 60 feet high. I would assume there would be because the people will be working with hazardous chemicals there, and they'll need some protection. But I don't know the answer. How, she mentioned that particulate matter would be captured at the site. How exactly will that happen? Is it going to be an indoor facility, an outdoor facility? Okay. And where specifically would a petrochemical solution be created? That is, in Lodi? Or where? And thus, we want to know also how far it's going to be transported, because it sounds to me like now we'll have hazardous material transported both to and from the site, as opposed to the hazardous material being made on the site and transported somewhere else. And lastly, I'll just say that if I was sitting on the planning commission, I'd be looking at, hmm, it's a residential neighborhood now, but maybe we can work something out, lease them some land out at the county dump there. They could build a road right back through to Milton. You don't have a lot of housing there. You'd still have to see what it's going to do to cattle. But that would be a place that already has smells and is fairly isolated. Plus, it puts you right on Milton Road and 26 Mile Road that takes you down to 4, and presumably, a lot of this hot asphalt is going to be used out in Angel's Camp off of 4. So, it also keeps the traffic off 26. Thanks very much for joining me.
Robert Wise, and I live right on that bowl he's talking about on Bar D Road, at the very top of it. I lived in LA pretty much for a long, most of my life. I dealt with, I don't know if you've ever heard of this, but the tires, there's a lot of tires in LA. And they create a dust which gets all over everything inside your house. And one day, when I was blowing my nose, I kind of looked down in it, and I thought, I've had enough of this. I wake up to diesel fumes. I woke up to cars running, and the place just stunk. So, I moved out here 16 years ago to get away from all the smell, all the dirt, to a healthier place, Calaveras County. So, that's going to give you a little background of where I'm going to be coming from, from this. Because every morning, I try to anyway, I open the windows on my house, I let the air go through, because I like having fresh air. I like having my coffee out on my deck, which, like I said, I live right on the top of that bowl. And I don't think I want to wake up in the morning smelling any more asphalt or any fumes like that. I didn't move out here to be breathing. And that's one of my concerns, is what's it going to smell like? Because every morning, and I love this, this is like one of my big reasons for sitting out on that deck, the cool air comes out from across that lake and comes up that bowl, right up across my back porch. It's a quality of life issue with me. And I know they've got, they've got plans. I heard they had a place in Ione that they were considering putting that batch plant. I'm kind of with the other gentlemen. Why don't we get it out of the residential area, keep our quality of life up, and look for other alternatives than building that plant right there on that site?
Thank you very much.
My name is Terry Henderson, and I live on 369 Fort Laurent Lane. And it's just off of Silver Rapids. And it too is in that area that Brock was mentioning. And I'm going to read my papers because it's easier for me to stay on track. So anyways, I have been a resident of Calaveras County in Valley Springs since my birth. My husband Rick and I bought our home on Laurent Lane in 1994. We are very concerned about the addition of a hot asphalt plant at the Hogan Quarry. We are concerned with the additional traffic to our already congested roads, more large trucks to our residential neighborhoods, and the potential for safety hazards that come with the added traffic and deteriorating road conditions. We are also concerned with the health and safety issues related to a hot asphalt plant, the noise and the smell of the asphalt plant, and the health risks that come from toxic fumes for those who already have health issues and for those who do not. Our young children are just developing their lungs, and the elderly who may have moved to Calaveras County for clean air and for health reasons. The air quality is very important. We all need clean air to be healthy. All of Rancho Calaveras, Lockontana, Gold Creek, and the Jenny Land area are serviced by CCWD for our water. The water treatment plant is located directly below Hogan Quarry on the Calaveras River, the proposed site of the hot asphalt plant. We all need safe water to drink and clean air to breathe. Clean air and water are not only a want, but are a necessity for life and the health of Calaveras County. It is not wise to do the wait-and-see type of decision. We'll let's wait and see if it goes well. One big mistake, and a lot of people will be harmed. Our health, safety, and our property values are at stake. It is not right that this was not disclosed to us, who are neighbors of the quarry, by the Calaveras County officials. We, the citizens, would like to thank the MyValleySprings.com for letting us know before it was too late. Our county goes above and beyond to protect the red-legged frog on the Cosgrove Creek. Please show the same dedication and respect to the county residents and the neighbors of the rock quarry who live by and depend upon the Calaveras River for health and quality of life. Please do the right thing and protect the Calaveras County residents. Say no to the addition of a hot asphalt plant at Hogan Quarry. We have collected the following signatures from over 355 Calaveras County residents within six days, and they too would like to have a voice and say no to the hot asphalt plant. And they signed with this letter of concern. And the concern is, it has been recently brought to our attention that the owners of the Hogan Quarry have requested permission to add a hot asphalt plant at the existing rock quarry located at 3650 Hogan Dam Road, Valley Springs. The concern of Calaveras County residents, in no particular order, are contamination of our drinking water. The Calaveras River is a seasonal river. If not for Hogan Dam, it would dry up every year. The citizens of our area are serviced by CCWD. We do not have an alternate water supply if our water is contaminated. This poses a risk for not only the residents, but also for all the wildlife living along the Calaveras River. Parts of the city of Stockton, California, and the farmers along the Calaveras River all depend upon fresh water to live and to grow their crops. The quarry is above the river. All rainwater will run directly into the water supply. The addition of delivery trucks to transport the hazardous material needed to make the asphalt. Our roads are not designed for additional trucks. Transportation of hazardous materials is an added risk to the Calaveras County residents and their property living near the roads where these chemicals will be transported. The expanded hours of operation of the plant, 4:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, approximately three weeks Caltrans night supply, 6:00 PM to 4:00 AM, Sunday through Thursday. These trucks will be in and around residential areas day and night. Many of us have to work and do not want the additional noise and traffic in our peaceful neighborhood. Additional delivery trucks to and from the quarry. Additional traffic will create hazards on already insufficient roads and highways. No turnout lanes or passing lanes on our existing roads. The deterioration of Calaveras County roads. The additional trucks will destroy our roads. The taxpayers cannot afford additional taxes to make the added repairs. Toxins in the air will destroy air quality. Many residents have moved to rural Calaveras County to avoid all the smog and unhealthy air of the city. Air quality will be gravely affected as more dust and pollutants are added to the air with the expanded operation.
Ms. Henderson, I hate to, are you, can you wrap it up now?
Yeah, I got one more paragraph.
Okay.
I'm just reading the, the, the sign.
Please consider the consequences of the decisions you are making that will affect the lives and homes of many. The loss of property values, loss of health. Think about it. Is the asphalt plant worth the risk of, of health and safety for our county residents? This is being proposed in our neighborhood, but all residents of Calaveras County will have to live with the consequences of the actions by those in charge. Air quality will not be limited to our neighborhood. Air quality will be affected throughout the county. The damage to the roads and additional traffic to our already dangerous roadways will become a problem for all county residents who are trying to navigate throughout the county.
I've got copies for all of you.
Thank you very much.
And copies of the signature.
Thank you.
Good morning, planning commissioners. My name is Laura Most, and I reside in Rancho Calaveras. If MyValleySprings.com had not informed us, and the neighbors had not seen big pieces of equipment being brought into the quarry, would this project have passed without any public input? I, for one, am very concerned about the air that we breathe and the water that we drink. My husband was diagnosed with COPD and congestive heart failure in 213. On Tuesday, I had my husband to see Dr. Esto Estes. It's a struggle for him to breathe now. What will it be if the asphalt plant is allowed to come into our neighborhood? He is on oxygen 24/7. His pulmonary doctor attributed his lung condition to his many years of working and breathing the chemicals in the building industry. He worked 20 years in the ridge construction and 30 years in the housing industry. Dr. Esto Estes is very concerned about his patients. Many are elderly, and many of them have respiratory problems. He also told us that he was concerned about the children of the community whose lungs have not developed yet. In three, in three and a half days, Dr. Esto Estes collected 100 of those signatures that Terry just presented to you, who oppose the asphalt plant being built in Valley Springs at the present rock quarry. I'm enclosing an article, Asphalt Plant Pollution, by Be Safe, another article dated August 15, 2012, in the Wall Street Journal. Asphalt Proposal Draws Complaints From Neighbors. Tyler and Sarah LaCreve live right across the street from an asphalt plant in Santa Rosa. "The hardest part is the smell," says LaCreve, 37, an event consultant who lives across the street from the plant with her husband Tyler and their two small sons. I'll describe it as someone tarring a roof inside my house to the point even my four-year-old complains of the smell and the headaches. We came to Rancho Calaveras from Tracy 15 years ago to get away from the smog and fog. Here we have blue skies, commissioners. I ask, please require an environmental impact report for every project being proposed in our county. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I live at 8221 Olive Branch Lane. I hope when I walk out of here, I don't get tarred and feathered. But I've got, I've heard the people talk about the concerns, environmental concerns, et cetera. For some reason, I think it's big fears, little risks. This gentleman over here, Brian Moss, and his group, will make sure that that plant will be a clean operating plant. It has to be. It has to conform to any state, local, and federal regulation. My big concern is the traffic. And I live off of Highway 26. I've been dodging side dumpers for the last four or five years when they're doing a good job. They're hauling rock down to protect the levees. It's continual trucks, truck after truck after truck. And from time to time, there are accidents that happen. If you go outside county line, just head west into San Joaquin County, on that sharp corner on the top of the hill, you'll see three big rocks off on the left-hand side. Those three rocks came out of one truck, and it was one driver killed. How many more trucks are we going to be putting down the road? That has not been answered. I think the key thing here is, well, let's say one, I think Mr. Maurer referred to this stuff as Portland cement. And then, everybody else is talking concrete. Remember, cement's that constituent, the limestone, et cetera, you know, that's naturally occurring. No problem. You start talking concrete, now you're mixing. One, one quick thing. If we could, maybe it's a possible, a possible option, why don't they just make, make the asphalt concrete paving right at job site? I'm making this statement because I came up Highway 4 yesterday out through Antioch, and they're tearing up an awful lot of concrete road. It's being ground and reused as base material right at this time, in situ. It's there, blah, blah, blah. Why not just make, you know, find out whether we could just haul that virgin rock out of the quarry and then have it mixed somewhere else? But that's all I have to say. But again, I think, I think the environmental portions are getting blown just totally out of all proportion.
Thank you very much.
My name's Marissa Peters. I live on Dunn Road. I am concerned of the toxins that are there. We have a family of five deer that come up every night. And the water supply has already stated on the TV that they cannot, with that size facility, change the water, fix the water. It's drinking water. So, I have a concern with that. And then, we like to fish. It's, it's a catch and release, but it's fun. It's nice. There's a lot of animals, a lot of other things in the area. So, I'm really concerned about that. I am looking up concrete asphalt or asphalt concrete. I don't know what the difference is that you were asking earlier that the lawyer had not looked up. So, I want to look that up. But as for the roads with the trucks and everything, it is hard on the roads. I lived on Hoffman Drive when they were reconstructing Highway 26. That road on Hoffman was where they detoured all the trucks. It is still not repaired. Highway 26 has been out there fixed for how long? And that road on Hoffman is still damaged from those trucks. Has this company looked at any other sites for this, this monstrosity, I want to call it? Milton Road, I was mentioned earlier. Why are they not looking outside of the residential area? There's no reason to have all this out there with the children with all the pollution, the toxins, the everything, the water plant not being able to facilitate it. They stated that on the news. Do you have why they backed out? Are we going to be allowed to hear why CCW is not doing this anymore? I'd like to know these things and take in consideration all these people that have moved here for the clean, fresh air and not the pollution. There's other places to have this plant, not near a residential or the wild natural, nature life, whatever you want to call it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Should I sign this?
Please do.
All right. My name is Richard Dinerline, and I have lived in this county for 16 years now. And I came to this county from various points throughout the state. I was a biologist for Fish and Game. I worked doing EIR, EIS, SECOR review for various different projects throughout the state. I literally moved seven times in 1997 because Fish and Game had me going all over looking at natural gas pipelines, power lines. I did SECOR review. I was part of the Calfed EIR on the South Delta, the whole SECOR review for the Calfed. Anyways, that's my past. And so, I'm here to tell you guys that you have a project that was permitted. It was, it was vested in before any of this environmental review came in. And so, before the environmental laws came in, you had this grandfathered in. And so, they had this use, and they've been doing a certain use for so many years. And now, they're coming up and they're changing their use. And so, that requires SECOR review. They are changing their use. They are changing their operations. They are adding to their operations. That requires permit review. So, Ford Construction will no longer have a grant. So Ford Construction will no longer have a grandfathered-in permit. They are going to have to apply for a brand-new permit and get a brand-new permit. And the reason why, and the main reason why they have to get a new permit is because if you look at the Sequel Guidelines as to why, when it is needed, when a review is needed, you'll see that one of the reasons is if there's opposition from a governmental agency or from the community. The community is objecting to this project, so it requires a Sequel Review. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Carol Barzee, and I've lived in the county for about 14 years.
Could we have a quiet place? I'm sorry. Go ahead. I was just trying to get everyone to listen to you.
Probably not after I get finished. I've lived in the county for about 14 years, in fact, over 14 years.
I'm sorry, could you state your name again?
Carol Barzee.
Carol, thank you.
And I have just a couple, I have one question and one statement. The question is, would all of this be lined in concrete as mining, state mining and laws go in geology, that this be lined in concrete because of the fact that none of this, in case there is a leak, there's an unpersaken earthquake or something like that, or the ground moves in miraculous ways, but would this be lined as protection on the river? Because it will go down through the dirt.
Yeah, that's a good, are you curious?
You're right. It will go down through the dirt, as we've known. And as dry as it is right now, it'll probably accept anything liquid that it gets. And the other thing is, in living here, I'm the same as the gentleman who came up to have his coffee in the morning. You know, goes out on his deck to have his coffee in the morning, be it at 6:00 or 10:00. I get out there sometime to have coffee. And I can hear the trucks go by. We live about 3/4 a mile, give or take, I don't know exactly, as it clarifies. And I hear the trucks put on their Jake brakes. I hear them put them on late in the evening, or when they're finished in the evening, going, coming down, but they use their Jake brakes as a brake. And it's loud, I can hear it where I live. I can see the quarry from my deck. It's never bothered me. I have asthma quite badly. I get around asphalt on the highway or in towns where friends, in a town where the friends live down near LA, probably the same area. But the problem is, is that I have to use my rescue inhaler. Well, those little puppies are about 40 bucks, and I go through two a month if I have to use them on a regular basis. So if you guys want to pay for it, fine, they can pay for it. But I don't want to have to buy those on a regular basis. The other thing is, is that several years ago, we opposed to the dust that was coming off the bridge into the river, a group I was with, My Valley Springs. And the dust dropped into the, and was dropping into the river through the slats on the bottom of the bridge that goes across to the quarry. Well, we asked and suggested that they get something, and I don't know what it was called, that they get something to take this off the tires of the truck as it comes, trucks as it come by. It's just as high as it was before. It's very frustrating to, you know, to do something and then for them not to carry on because, oh, we can get away with that. We don't have to do that anymore. It may still be there. I think it's a trackout that they get on the trucks that goes through. But I think that they haven't been compliant with that, so, and it's a very minor thing, but it isn't to the water. But I have a feeling that, you know, that if they're not compliant with that, they're not going to be compliant with anything else. It's called just a distrust, since I helped work on it to get it. I am no longer involved in this sort of thing, here I stand, mainly because of the fact that I just get too upset and too frustrated fighting, and nothing happens. It's just, it's very few things are not approved. They are just approved, and unless you have been to one of these sites and see how this works, I don't think you have a right to even vote on it or a right to, you know, you have to tell other, you have to know how this works in other places to find out if it's going to work here, what the traffic is like, what the truck traffic is like. And if you don't know that, then you really can't make a decision on it for us. And you do, I don't know if you're paid or not, I can't remember, but if you aren't paid, it should be part of you, because this could go in next door to you someday. And so I really think that you need to make the decision. You need to make the decision as to whether this is a right thing or not, a moral thing, or moral, use your moral compass as to whether it's right for you or not. And if it isn't right for you, it definitely isn't right for us. So, my opinion, and thank you very much for letting me give it.
Good morning, members of the planning commission. My name is Lou Mayhew. I read over most of the material, including the staff report. And what I was impressed by was the language where repeatedly the planning director used the language. The board may have intended, this suggests that, there was inference, supposition, and I thought, for a decision of this magnitude, this goes way too far. It almost becomes a discretionary decision. Because of the distance, you've got to go to read into former actions. So I think it's a tortured decision and ought to be reversed. It sets a bad precedent. I was startled that the definition of asphalt as being concrete that the planning director put in the staff report, they had to go to an internet website to come up with that decision. And I think I would prefer Webster's definition of contract. So you may wish that this is not as it is, but I would hope you would have the courage, the language is not there in the code as it is now, have the courage to say that and make a decision based on that. Don't infer. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Terry Bedoin, and I live in New Hogan Lake Estates. I live on one of those hilltops that was referred to a little earlier by Brock. I invite any of you to come over and have a cup of coffee on my deck because we overlook the quarry, okay? When they start dynamiting and truck operations at 6:30 or 7:00 in the morning, you will not sleep. It is impossible to sleep with that type of noise. Also, the dust that comes from the quarry to the houses surrounding me is extreme. You have to sweep the decks, you have to, you know, wash down your walkways, and we actually have to hose off our solar panels two to three times a year because of the dust. Anybody that would suggest that we will not have any environmental impact from the effluence or from the smokestack that is going to be giving off, now I understand that Ford Construction is investing in the best collective system that they can get, but they're also not saying that they're going to be able to collect or arrest 100% of that pollution. They're not. And that pollution is going to be smelled daily by everybody in that community. And I would ask Mr. Maurer and the people on the planning commission to think about whether or not they would be so in favor of a hot asphalt batch plant two miles from their house. If this was two miles from your house, you'd be sitting out here with these people, okay? Please, you have an opportunity to choose between the rights of big business and the rights of the community that you serve. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Clyde. I'm from Valley Springs. I have six properties by the quarry on Dunn Road. I live on one of those roads. Everyone's interested about the history of the quarry. Well, I lived in Rancho when there was 30 homes in Rancho back in the 70s, early 70s. The quarry was not there. You had the old pit and stuff that they mined and stuff to put Hogan's Dam in. Mr. Hodgson, which was the supervisor back then, which is still alive, the gentleman could have asked him what the findings were, because he was one of that. He met with about six of us that actually lived in Rancho, because at that time, there was about 30 homes in Rancho. So he met with six of us that lived there and asked us what we thought about, you know, is, I believe it was Tiger was putting it in. And so we told them that our concern, because Mr. Fox lived at the corner of Hartfixon and Dunn, at that time, it was a straight through because Lock at Tenna wasn't here yet. And he wanted a stop sign there, a four-way stop, because we were concerned about the trucks from the quarry, you know, at a fast speed. He did that. We were concerned about the roads at that time because roads in Rancho were brand-new. So Tiger paved the road from the quarry to the highway to freeway standards. He agreed to run on times because he was in, because there was a residential area there at that time, before the quarry was there. I mean, I was there before the quarry was there. And so he was me working in a residential area, and Mr. Tiger was an excellent neighbor. He never ran, you know, late hours, he didn't work in the morning. We had problems with the trucks when Lock at Tenna went in, they started taking the shortcut there. He stopped that, and of course, the highway patrol did too, because they parked the car there. But at one time, when I moved to Valley Springs, I was represented by supervisors. My, you know, they came to my house and asked me what I wanted. Now, I live here, I have more property here, they do, you guys do what you want now. You don't care what the public has to say. I didn't have no one come to my, I know my supervisor. He didn't come to my house and ask me what I thought about this. They tried to do the same thing up by Maloney's. They had a spill up there. Oh, it wasn't that bad of a spill, but they guaranteed there wouldn't be a spill at Maloney's. There was. Then we had another supervisor that worked at the cement plant. So they want to put a coal burner there to burn toxic waste, a coal generating thing. He's not a supervisor no more. We do not want someone to tell us what to do. We elect our officials to represent us for what our best interest is. Lock at Tenna, Rancho, and Valley Springs is a retired community. We're all retired, basically, up there. We don't want a high, you know, a factory, and we don't want that. I think the quarry could operate there, but I am not pleased with Mr. Ford. He's been a lousy neighbor ever since he's bought the thing. And besides that, if there is something goes bad up there, you're not going to get it from him, because that's a corporation. He will still keep all his marbles, and we will pay for the damage, because he'll fall bankruptcy and walk. So that's all I've got to say. I just want, you know, that's the history of the quarry. You know, Rancho was there first, then Lock at Tenna came in after the quarry. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Ed Bruin. I live in Lock at Tenna on the south end. I'm exactly two miles north of the quarry. I have an unobstructed view of the quarry and its operations. I saw the equipment being put in, and I was quoted on June 5th in the Calaveras Enterprise. A picture was taken from my deck. I receive dust when the wind blows from the south and southwest. I'm not allergic to anything as such, but I can see the results of the dust all over the place. I got a pool, it goes in the south end of my pool, on the deck, wherever you want to find the dust. I'm very much concerned about particulates from asphalt. It's kind of hard to believe that you're not venting something into the air when you're doing the mixing. That remains to be seen. I wrote everyone on the planning commission right off the bat, the end of May, when I became aware of all this. And as such, I also mentioned, all right, if you're going to allow this plant to operate down there in the quarry, how about the quarry here in San Andreas? The one that George Reed Incorporated runs? Would they be allowed to run this? What would happen to the air around here, around the hospital? Those are questions that, you know, you need to look at and address, okay? And I went on the internet this morning to try to figure out this convoluted, what I think is a convoluted definition. I went to Antioch Building Materials Brentwood Ready Mix. Their products, ready mix concrete, parentheses, specially ready mix concrete, colored concrete, fiber mesh, that's one of their lines. Asphalt, all by itself, recycled base rock is another product, miscellaneous rock and sand, utility concrete blocks. These people have been around since 1950. They know the terminology. Why we don't know the terminology here, and it's industry-wide. In other countries, asphalt is not called asphalt. You look at that, look at the how it's done throughout the world. So all of a sudden, we're saying one is equated to the other, all right? You look at your 17-70-050 in paving, and they say, concrete may be substituted for asphalt concrete. If you substitute it, it's not the same. Maybe it has the same effect. Concrete's a better product. It lasts longer. Asphalt has its uses, curb roads in particular. All right. And then the other thing, as far as information that's been obtained through emails, information and application, and I'm going to commend the Calaveras Enterprise for their good investigation, okay, of the facts. You know, there's a lot of opinions, but let's get the facts down, all right? Ford Construction, Foothills, and actually Chester Brothers of Hannibal, Missouri, whose people that are bringing in the equipment and probably training people if it ever gets off the ground, they're quoting 3,000 tons a day of asphalt, all right? What's the payload of an average dump truck of asphalt? I'm going to guess around 15 tons, 30,000 pounds. And they also say, well, we operate from 4:00 in the morning until 6:00 in the evening, okay? They got three main jobs, and they're all with Caltrans, all right? I'd like to know where these jobs are. How close are they to this supposed site for the quarry? Okay? Let's just go and do the numbers with 15 tons of truck a day. 15 into 3,000, 200, 200 trucks a day. Let's get into what that means in minutes. It means the trucks running our roads every 4.2 minutes in that 14-hour span. All right, where's it going? Is it larger? It's going to go down Silver Rapids, then where it's going to go? 26, which direction? Is it going to go south towards Stockton? Is it going to go north through the glorious four-way stop that we've been experiencing over the last three months? These 10 jobs, are they going to be directing traffic at the four-way stop for us?
Mr. Brown, your time is nearly up. Could you summarize your thoughts?
Okay, no, that's, these are questions. These are questions that I'd like to know, all right? Real quick, what are these three projects for Caltrans? What roads will they take? How many truckloads? Now, is there any sand involved? Or is it just rock and asphalt? I don't know that. That would be the question, okay? And then, what revenue to the county are we getting out of all this activity? How is it helping Calaveras County? Okay? Please give these answers to the general public.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Let me put my name down.
I live in Rancho Calaveras, not far from the subject matter property, and I do hear the dynamite when they do that. I'm just going to try to be very succinct and stay on topic here. There's been a lot of emotional pleas, and rightly so. But we're here today for a public hearing to discuss and make a decision, hopefully, on the planning director's interpretation of whether or not this is a permitted use. There's a couple of things I would bring to your attention and focus that have been brought forward today, both by Mr. Wooster, who is a member of the bar, if I remember correctly, and our planning director, Mr. Maurer. So I would, I'm going to quote those two individuals on things that they brought out from the material that was presented or offered to the public, because of any of the opinions, I think that those matter most, being a member of the bar and a professional planning director. Mr. Maurer said, regardless of whether Calaveras County requires a permit, the applicant is still subject to state and federal laws as pertaining to water quality and wildlife protection. That's a true statement. He also said- He also said that he believes that it's a permitted use based on zoning. The problem that lies with that is this comes directly full circle back to the problem that we've been experiencing for the last eight years, which is that we do not have a current general plan for the county. If we did, the county general plan as an updated version would most definitely not allow for such. And if you were to approve this to move forward without that intact, you're opening yourself up for a huge lawsuit. As a former county supervisor, just leaving office in January of this year, having served the last four years, I can tell you that nine tenths of the time that we spent in closed council was based on trying to prevent frivolous lawsuits against the county, most of the time for out of date policies that we have not renewed or reviewed to be in compliance with state mandates. And this flies in the face of everything that the law currently requires. Mr. Mauer said that this property in operation is a legal non-conforming use. That is also a correct statement. And I would remind you of the testimony given here by Mr. Enderline, I believe it was, who has been involved in secret reviews with the state and federal agencies. And I would second and substantiate his comments in regards to the fact that this is a legal non-conforming use, AKA it's grandfathered in. That's one thing. But if you allow a new process, a new function to take place here, you are basically giving them a new lease on life superseding the non-conforming grandfathered in. They now become a legal conforming operation based on your approval extending them a new function at this site. I'm telling you, that right there is a bombshell for legal matters. There's a reason why it's a legal non-conforming use and it hasn't been ever approved to be a conforming use over the years. And that's because it wouldn't be allowed. Okay? The last couple of points here, going to Mr. Wooster's comment. Mr. Wooster picked up in the data here that it also mentioned under the same acceptable operations, the word of drilling. Okay? Also, I heard the words shale and tar mixing, those type of things like that. So, I mean, if we were to look at that, we might say, hey, we could have a fracking operation right here. Why not? It's permitted under that zoning. In this same planning commission, at least some of the members of this planning commission that are sitting on the board right now, denied an application for a gun range in the same area of the county. Now, that was a very controversial issue. It was originally approved-
Mr. Spellman, I'm just, could you, you're very near the end of your allotted time. So if you could wrap it up. Sorry for the interruption.
Okay. Sure. I'll get it, I'll get wrapped up here real quick. The shooting gun range was not approved, it actually was, you know, it was denied because there were proponents that came out from the community and said that, sure, based on zoning, they had a right to have a gun range, but there were a number of other parcels in the county that had the same zoning, some of which were only five acres. And it was not safe and it would be inequitable, you know, to cause them to conform and not the others would be inequitable in the eyes of the law. Finally, I want to appeal to Mr. Toono specifically because he's a resident of Rancho Calaveras and I've known him for quite some time. I know he's taken at great length to, you know, update, modernize and beautify his property, which looks better every day. He does a good job on it. And as a licensed Realtor with the state of California since 2001, and I currently practice, I can tell you that the disclosure statements required in California real estate law, I would be breaking my fiduciary responsibility as a licensed ruler with the state if I did not advise my clients that they must disclose that there is an asphalt plant anywhere within five miles of their home. The law reads, and I'm going to, you know, shorten it for Ms. McLaughlin. I know. Basically, to sum it up, it says if there's anybody, if there's anything that affects, that materially affects health and well-being or property value, it must be disclosed. Okay? So if, if a buyer was going to buy Mr. Toono's house, Mr. Toono, if I was advising him, and as his real estate professional, I would tell him that he must disclose that there's an asphalt plant. And I guarantee you, the buyers that are looking at purchasing Mr. Toono's home would not want to get in a philosophical conversation about what defines the difference between asphaltic and asphalt. They just wouldn't buy your house.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Carlos Ambres and I represent Stockton East Water District. And I'd just like to note really fast that we did, as soon as we found out about this sighting of the asphalt plant, my office did file a formal appeal, which returned to us as untimely. Subsequently, we've had conversations with Ford's counsel and we're trying to get our objection resolved amicably. So with that, I mean, we have not reached an agreement yet, so I'm here just to lodge our objection formally for the record. I think our main concern is any impact on the Calaveras River.
Sir, could you please speak closer?
Yes. How about that? Is that good? Our main concern is any impact on the Calaveras River. This is our main source for supplying water services to our customers. The Hogan Quarry sits along the Calaveras River upstream from the district's point of diversion. Thus, any degradation to the quarry or the quality of the Calaveras River from the batch plant operation will subsequently impact the district and its customers. So that's our main concern, is its location and any effect it would have downstream to our customers. We service Stockton residents with water from the Calaveras. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Would the chair consider a break in the middle of public comment?
It's up to you guys if you'd like one.
I would open you up if you want.
Is there a second to the motion?
I was, you know, I was planning on going through the-
Do what you want.
Unless everyone, do you guys need a break?
No.
No, I, you're just going to have to hang in there then.
Well, good morning. My name is Mark Jones and I'm a board member of MyValleySprings.com. My Valley Springs, I think, does a pretty good job of letting people know about stuff. We've been kind of hanging around here doing this for like 10 years. What I find most appalling about this is we kind of pay attention to everything around here. A source in Sacramento told us about this.
Excuse me, what?
Nobody, nobody, a source from Sacramento told us about Mr. Mauer's letter to Ford. Nowhere around here has anybody in the initial process done anything about informing all the people it affects. I find that just appalling. The next part about this is like, we reviewed the staff report on like Friday and Thursday when it came out last week. And they said, you people, no public comments in your written staff report as far as I know. We read the staff report and the public comments weren't in there. So we went down to the planning department on Monday and asked to see the file. We got a PDF file and I hope that you people got all the staff, all the comment letters that was actually in the planning department file and an email from us.
We did.
You shouldn't, it should come from the planning department, not from us.
No, it did come from the planning department.
You had written things in your, you had all the comment letters in your, so online, those weren't included. So we assumed you didn't get them. A bad assumption? I don't know. But the public comment letter should be in what's online so that we know and that other people that want to read other people's comment letters can go to the county website and see what other people want to say about this. The other thing is I'm just going to try to, Gregory mentioned about amount of trucks. I'm just going to do a little bit of math for you. The total amount of trucks that CB Construction is to complete their current projects is pretty significant. It takes one trip on their projects, about five hours to make a full cycle thing from Ford Construction Quarry to their current locations of the projects that CB Construction has awarded. The cycle time reflects the time to take to load the material at the plant, the time to project, travel time to the job site, the dump site, you know, dumping the load at the, at the job site and returning back to the plant. With that being said, you have a single truck hauls approximately, what I found out was 25 tons asphalt. A basic average use in calculating estimates for construction could be 2,000 tons of hot asphalt placement per shift. I've heard 3,000 tons a day. I'm just going to continue with my math at 2,000 tons. If you take the total estimated tonnage at 2,000 per shift and divide by 50 tons, that's two loads for each truck a day at 25 tons. That's 40 semi trucks a day needed for shift of construction. If you take those and put them in a line, that's like a half a mile long of trucks. That's from the four-way stop back to like Gold Creek or Hogan Dam Road, somewhere around there. The current volume of traffic in the town, that's going to significantly, you know, affect morning and afternoon traffic through that four-way stop. If you take into consideration all the contracts that they've been awarded or currently in the process of trying to get for this plant, I came up with 4,325 truckloads on the roads. And I think that's a pretty significant amount of trucks. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
My name is Jerry Woodard and I'm a resident on Silver River Drive. I have all the same concerns about water and air and property values and trucks and keeping the roads up and so forth that everybody else has expressed. But I have one other concern. I've listened to this debate is concrete and asphalt, the same thing. We're going down all these technical definition things, worrying about trucks and spillage and so forth. A statement was made kind of to start and said that we should look at what the law says can be done and not what ought to be done. We depend upon you as our protectors. You're here to represent us as a community and to protect us as a community in the things we cannot do for ourselves. Even if it means breaking new ground, we need you to do what ought to be done, what the community wants done. Not what some technical lawyer can slip down through the various codes and whether things were admitted or put in or what maybe intent was 50 years ago. Or we need you as a planning commission to do what should be done for the best interests of our community to protect our health and safety and our wallets. So I would hope you'd have the courage to stand up and forget what happened in 1961 or 68 or wherever it was and do what's in the best interests of Valley Springs today and what the residents of Valley Springs want in their community today. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Please, no, no clapping.
Hello, my name is Carol Clark and I was glad to find out today, my first meeting that I've attended, that I am not considered any better than a trout in the local stream or some plant that's planted on agricultural land because apparently people don't have any rights here. Only environmental rules and other things keep crap out of our neighborhood. And that's what this is. It's crap. This is a residential area that's been built in around the quarry and the only way out of it is across Silver Rapids Road. I don't live there, but I sympathize for the people that do. Also, I was just wondering where the representative for our community is today. I don't see him here. Mr. Kearney is obviously missing. I don't know why, but he's not here. I read his article in the paper and it's a rambling bunch of BS. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm her husband. My name is Dr. Clark. I'm a scientist with a multinational oil company. And what we do is the asphaltums that you're talking about are distillation bonds from heavy crude. I spent my life doing this, going around the world. And I tell you, this stuff is, if you get down to two tenths of a milligram per cubic meter of the effluent when you pilot life and stuff, it is a strong relationship between that and carcinogenicity. The problem is that there's thousands of these materials and it's really hard to pin down what's, it's kind of like cement, tobacco smoke. You know, a lot of these people are going to go out and have a smoke afterwards. You think it's fine. Well, it really is bad stuff. One thing I would like you to do, I wish you could have seen, my research director died about six years before retirement. You ought to see, he, it developed itself as pancreatic cancer. And you should have been able to sit there and talk to the guy and see what he looks like when he's on his way out. Group leader, Dave Gardner, he lasted about a year and a half into retirement. You didn't need to put away a lot of money into retirement plans. If you were working on this stuff, you weren't going to be around all hell of a lot of time, whole, whole time. I think that there's technical aspects to the thing. If you can smell this asphalt, there's too much of it. Have you ever driven behind an asphalt truck? You know it's there. If you say, well, who's going to take the fall for it? I think the guys in Rancho are going to get that, get it worse. The people in Lock and Tanna have left it unless the wind's blowing our direction. I don't mind hearing the dynamite go off, you know, and the house rumble a little bit in the quarry. That's fine. But I am concerned about the chemical vapors that are going to come off from heating asphalt. When they heat it somewhere else and bring it in, they say the truck can't fall into the ditch or whatever. We don't have car accidents here. And the vapor coming off of it isn't going to go into development. If someone coming in and they smell that stuff, they're going to look for a house somewhere else. And if you own a house there, you want to save, well, what can you, what can you sell it for? In other words, if you can't sell it for zip, you know, that's the people, most people here, this is their biggest investment of their life is their home. And you see the, see their, housing sales isn't great anyway, but see it going down the toilet, you know, that's not a good thing. Well, anyway, that's one expert's opinion.
Thank you, Dr. Clark.
Tom in Casino Calaveras Planning Coalition. We disagree that the asphalt plants should be allowed in the M1 and M2 zones by right without the benefit of use permit. The M1 zone is for light industrial uses that can be, quote, "in proximity to commercial and residential areas" and that are not, quote, "obnoxious by reason of smoke, noise, odor, or similar objectionable effects," unquote. Calaveras County Code 17.40010. Things like bakeries that make cupcakes, nurseries that grow plants, warehouses, catering companies that deliver food, and feed stores are allowed by right in this zone. By contrast, EIRs on asphalt plants from other counties indicate that asphalt plants can have significant noise, air quality, and transportation impacts. Asphalt plants have impacts that are far more analogous to the manufacturing uses that require a use permit in the M2 zone. For example, plants that manufacture chemicals, fertilizer, glue, plastics, rubber, or processed sewage require a use permit in the M2 zone. The planning director can and should have determined that asphalt plants require a use permit in the M2 zone. This would make Calaveras County consistent with other counties that require use permits for asphalt plants, including Amador and Sonoma Counties. In addition, when one, somebody said earlier, we can't just look at this in a vacuum. I agree with that. In addition, when one looks at the county's land use and zoning maps, it's evident that the planning director's interpretation could have ludicrous and harmful results. For example, here in San Andreas, there is M2 zone land adjacent to the Mountain Oaks School. There's also M1 zone land across the street from the MATC Medical Clinic. There's also M1 zone land across the street from the MATC Medical Clinic. Does it really make sense to allow asphalt plants by right without any use permits in such close proximity to the young and the ill who may be at greater risk from harmful pollution emissions? If it were your hospital or your grandchild's school, would you want a noisy asphalt plant next door? Would you want your kids and ill people trying to cross the road in the midst of the truck In a letter, the project proponent's attorney indicates that the county's procedures for conditional use permits to protect people's health and safety from the threat of toxic substances are redundant of state and federal regulations and therefore are unnecessary. Today, you heard the planning director suggest that we can rely on the state and federal agencies in a similar fashion. The people of Valley Springs are well aware of the problem of relying on state and federal agencies. For decades, they have waited for the state of California to reroute State Route 12. They are still waiting. For years, they have waited for clearance from the federal government to proceed with flood control projects on Cosgrove Creek. They are still waiting. The good people of Calaveras County cannot effectively alter or direct the priorities of state and federal regulatory agencies. As a result, we rely on our own environmental health department. We rely on our own public works department. We depend on our own planning department, building department, and code enforcement. We depend on our county and sheriff, county sheriff and fire districts. When it comes to protecting the health, safety, and well-being of local citizens, our local governments cannot answer any affirmative, a call to abandon their responsibilities. When it comes to protecting the health, safety, and well-being of its citizens, our local governments must lead the way. We at the CPC strongly believe that good projects and good project proponents will succeed when the rights and interests of both project proponents and local residents alike are openly considered and accounted for in a fair public process. We also feel that collaboration is more likely to result if the early public processes are designed to promote collaboration rather than adversarial confrontations. In the letter we've submitted, we provide our suggestions for improved planning department procedures for making these sorts of findings in the future. We hope that the planning commission will begin the process to amend planning department procedures to put these reforms in place. Thank you and God bless. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Pacino.
Hello, my name is Jan Foster and I'm always very nervous about speaking in public, but this matter required me to. We have lived in Calaveras County for 10 years. I live on Crow Lane, which is one block off Silver Rapids. It was disclosed to us when we moved in that there was a rock quarry. And I honestly can say they have not impacted my life negatively. I knew it was there. You know you're gonna have dust. You know you're gonna hear the explosions and you're gonna have trucks. But this is a whole new ballgame we're entering in. And this is definitely a serious issue. My husband could not be here today. He has COPD. Every day, he gets up trying to breathe. We are lucky we didn't choose to live in many of the other foothill communities that have bad air quality every day. This community is one of them that doesn't. However, I can attest to the fact that this is a little canyon and it does not have anywhere to go. During the early spring and late winter months, people like to sleep with their windows open to have fresh air. I can't tell you how many times I have to get up and shut windows because smoke is coming in our home. And it's because it comes right down that low canyon, right into our bedroom windows. Night after night sometimes, and it's people burning debris. It's not even their fireplaces trying to save money for heat. That I could be more compassionate about. I have gotten in my car in my pajamas, which is a dumb thing to do, and driven around to see how far away the smoke is coming from. It's often more than a mile. And we are now going to put this in a precarious situation in a residential area, adding one more thing. All of us are living in an environment now that we know we are living with the results of our bad decisions. We have no water to drink because we have global warming, whether you wanna admit it or not. We have the chance of losing our clean water. We are having farmers not being able to grow the food we need. You have to think about these things environmentally. All these rules and laws and grandfathered, they've taken away the grandfathered water rights. And that's what people need to live. We all need water, food, and clean air. And it's time for people to be proactive instead of reactive. And we need to take a stand on what we need to do as a community. And it's time that each of you individually think about that. I have no problem with this corporation who wants to make a living and wants to do well economically. We all have lost half of the value of our homes and we wanna regain some of that. Now we can throw our homes away because that's what will happen. I would never have bought a home that had a petrol industry going on that close to our home. And I'm serious that you need to really look and reflect. It's easy to make a decision based on what your interests are, but you need to look at a decision based on the best interest for everyone. The houses came later, so we can't help that, but you can help what happens from now on. And you need to be serious about it. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Foster.
First, I just wanted to say that I hope we all appreciate how many people packed this room today. This is called community. And I don't think we have to go all the way to Sacramento or Stockton or San Francisco for expertise because we have it right here in our community and we heard a lot of it today. And we're happy to provide that expertise to help you inform the decisions on our behalf. I just wanted to share something that, you know, I hear a lot of times people talk about the good old days and how it was clean air and it was great and why can't we just do that? Well, our ancestors, my grandparents, were brilliant. You know, they lived a very simple life, but they were smart people. We're smart people, but they didn't have the science that we have today. They didn't have the experience and the expertise that comes from the experience of, "We did this. Oh, well, we learned something from that. We did that. Oh, we learned something from that." They don't have all that, didn't have all that to draw on, but we do. When we know better, we're supposed to do better. And on that note, I just wanna tell you that when I was a little girl, myself and my five siblings, we looked forward to playing hide-and-seek in the big white DDT smoke that went up and down the alleys. We know better today, so let's look at the science. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live on Huckleberry Lane. I can only repeat everything that's already been said about the environmental issues. And as far as a company being grandfathered and working on a grandfathered something from 1961, I say BS. It's now, it's today, as everyone has said, we have more science, more knowledge, more neighborhoods around that area. We can't go back, we can't go back to something so old. Now's the time. I know this isn't the place to relook at those permits, but I think we need to start making intelligent decisions about what's happening now. And what's happening now is a company that uses petrol products wants to come into our neighborhoods and spew pollution, air, water smells on our children, on us, on our beautiful home sites. And for what? Yes, I understand we need paving material. We do. We all drive on the roads. However, as people have said, there are places in this county, wide open places, not next to a water supply, a river, where these things can be located. And I have a feeling Ford Construction can probably afford to obtain a site if they don't have one already that does not impact the health of these people. And as far as our supervisor, Mr. Kearney, don't count on him, folks. I'm not even gonna get into how he railroaded me, but he and you are here to represent people, people, not interpretation of antiquated permit laws. We're not scientists. We're just people who wanna live and breathe and drink clean water. We just wanna live a simple, pure life as much as possible. And we don't wanna lose all the money that we've put into our homes and our lifestyle and chosen to live here for the things this county is known for, recreation, you know, fishing. And now, and now someone from, needs to make a buck. Oh, well, you know, 10 jobs, that's nothing. Nothing compared to the people's lives that are gonna be ruined by having that there. Kearney, you talk about jobs. I can hire 10 people myself, probably. I don't need that company in here ruining my air and my water and plummeting my property value. I was planning to sell my house. I'm not going to be able to now and that's a sad thing.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name's Aaron Bassett. I live in Lockentown. I live right next door to Ed Byrne. I have a view of the quarry right outside my back door. My property is impacted severely by the dust and situations and noise and stuff from there. Not too bad, but it's still somewhat of an annoyance. I've read a lot of this going on about these jobs going on in Calaveras County and they're quoting as one big job on the realignment of four between Copperopolis and Angels. That's BS. There's already a hot plant on Ed Byrne's ferry road between Copperopolis and Jamestown. Why would they haul asphalt from Valley Springs to Copperopolis when we already have a plant there? George Reed has the contract for the four-way stop job down there. He's got a plant in Clements. You think he's gonna buy asphalt when he's got his own plant there that's already there for him? I don't see that happening. There's been numerous studies around the country. Property values are showing to drop an average of 56% when there's an asphalt plant nearby. No thanks. I'm just recovering from the crash. I've been there 23 years. Quarry was a real tiny little place when I first moved in. I've watched it expand to probably triple the size of what it was. And now with this directly upwind for me, I'm gonna have asphalt smells and, you know, asphalt is safe once it's put on the ground and is processed and on the ground. No problem with it. It's the process of the chemical makeup and putting together the asphalt that causes the situation. They can't even record the pollutants on the conveyors and the transfer systems that they have in place at the plant. So you really need to take a very close look at this because you are gonna destroy the property values of that area there. It's a residential area now. You know, I'm just now recovering from the crash, so, you know, if I ever wanted to sell, it'd probably be impossible. So I think this is a bad idea. The benefits for the county are not there. 10 jobs, they're gonna have their own people to run the place. You're not gonna hire people off the street to run an asphalt plant. The tweakers they hire from Valley Springs, if they last a week, they'll be lucky. If they get a month out of them, you might keep them for a few months. But other than that, I think that this is a bad, bad decision and I think it's, there is way too many negatives to even come close that way on the positives of this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Guess it's you.
Good morning, Still. Vicki Renke, Calaveras County Republicans. We've heard, you know, from the community that lives near the quarry that they're concerned about pollution and air and, you know, that's a fair statement. But is it polluting? You know, is it harmful to people? And that's something I know as a commission, you're gonna have to go out and find that out for yourselves, but I've done some research. I don't find that to be the truth. As a matter of fact, and I feel bad that some people get respiratory problems in their lives, but my dad, when I was growing up, was a driver of an asphalt truck 50 years ago. And he's almost 90. So, you know, it doesn't always affect everybody. And this was before they had regulations on what to do with asphalt and not. So I guess I just wanna make that point because what I find and I see is that there's just difference of opinions that we all have. And that's healthy. But some opinions are, "Let's not put anything in our backyard because it could do this to us." Well, does it do that to you? I don't, I don't see it, but you guys will determine that. The other part is our county. We get up and talk about, "Well, services we want here." But we don't have the financial income in this county because we stop everything that ever comes our way. And so I just wanted to real quick quote a statement out of the current county grand jury report. There was a finding, the grand jury finds that the county administration auditor controller was correct in stating that future general fund revenues may not support rising expenditures. This will result in the depletion of county reserves and the inability to meet their obligations. Their recommendation, the grand jury recommends that the county explore opportunities to grow its revenues and tax base. For example, streamlining the permit process could have helped attract new business to the county while aiding local contractors and existing small business owners. We all know that that's a huge issue here, but we keep shutting everything down. And I know that there's a philosophy, and my Valley Springs carries this philosophy, that really nothing should be built in Calaveras County. Nothing should go forward. Projects that have been stopped in the past that I know of, and I'm sure there are more, was Trinidad's Golf Course. Could have brought in a lot of visitors to our county, could have done great things. The Copperopolis housing development that was supposed to go in there got stopped. And then Valley Springs wanted to put in a gun range. It got stopped. And now this project wants to come through and they wanna stop this. So I say, "Yeah, it is your job to look at these projects as a whole and to look at our county." Because it's always, if it's in my backyard, I don't want it. That's probably just a normal sometimes, although I would hope that I wouldn't be that way because I realize progress is important in communities to keep the system going, the roads that we need built, the police we need to patrol our streets. Anyway, so I wanna look at it more from an economic standpoint. And we need to continue to open our process up to allowing business here. And that's why I guess the one point would be, is this true? Is it that polluting? And so I wanna encourage you to accept what Peter Maurer has come up with as far as the permit process, 'cause that's all we're talking about here actually is the permitting. Looks like they do have to go through other air quality control permitting. So that's already being done. It's not like we're just gonna put that in and say, "Oh, wow, too bad people." So I hope that...
Your time's just about up.
Okay. So I'm hoping that you will consider the economic pieces to this and that you start looking at more business and permitting them and streamlining that permit process. And so I just encourage you that you don't just stop projects for the wrong reasons. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hello.
My name's Judy Morgan. I live on Silver Rapids Road, about a mile from the plant. And from the sounds of things, I probably won't even get it, get out... And from the sounds of things, I probably won't even get it, get out of my driveway. There's about 30 homes whose driveways enter onto Silver Rapids Road. So I think it's, this will have an impact. They've gone, everybody's gone over all the environmental impacts, and the last person brought up the money. Our houses are going to drop in value immensely, which will impact property taxes that are collected by the county. So there's a point for you. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
I'm speaking as Joyce Tekel, a resident in the county right now. My Valley Springs, from time to time, writes articles in the paper or puts out letters because they constantly have to correct people's impression of us that we don't want any projects. We want them done well. We want safe roads when they're over. We want the impacts addressed. It's not about stopping the projects. You bring us a good project, you never hear from us. So we're not against all projects. The bottom line is here, if this asphalt plant goes in, we want those permits reviewed and we want an environmental impact report, period. If they can meet those standards, we'll see. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know I've spoken before, and if I'm out of line, but if you've ever seen anybody that has worked hard, my husband and I have been married over 55 years.
Ma'am, I think we need to hear from other people first.
Okay, just if you've ever seen anybody on a breathing machine, you would think twice.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, but we need to hear from people that haven't spoken yet.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm George Frye. I've probably sat in more board of supervisor meetings than I want to admit over the past 37 years. And I just want to clarify something. I'm not defending anybody. I'm just addressing the law. Somebody got up here earlier and spoke and said they wanted to know why their supervisor wasn't here. You represent the five supervisors. You are the people at this point in time that are making decisions. And the reason why those supervisors are not here is because if this gets appealed to the board of supervisors and they're in this audience, they're not going to be able to vote on it. And that's the law. I just wanted to clear that up because we've got a whole group full of people here, and maybe a lot of them don't understand or don't know. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Peter Race. I live in Valley Spring. Basically, I live in Genaland. And anybody says they own Valley Spring, represent Valley Spring, there was an election last time, for one thing. I live on the Calaveras River, folks. I don't know anybody from the quarry who owns it. I don't know anybody from the people who are presently doing the asphalting. We have over $100,000 worth of asphalt work being produced on Highway 12 and 26. I did not see anybody bitching and complaining about putting asphalt in a natural forest, asphalt so people can go out in the wild and see any forest for their health and beauty. I didn't see anybody complain about putting asphalt smooth roads on public roads so they can pedal their butts up and down on the public roads for their health. To me, I look at very stupid, basic things. I like to follow the money. Who's got most to gain and who's got most to lose? And it's amazing when you follow the bouncing ball of the dollars, who's behind it, who's not behind it. There was some big hoopla concerning CCWD. It turned out to be nothing, and I don't know if anybody from CCWD was going to speak, the manager. It was, they have no concern. I wanted to look into it. I talked to the fire chiefs. They got satisfied. Now, I realize that, oh, my God, my property value is going to go down. Well, I'll bet you any money, they got a pretty damn good break on when they purchased the property. And I'm sure they took their due diligence as a real estate to find out, why is that thing over there, what is it going to be? Now they complain that, oh, my God, it's my smell. Folks, you're going to smell that asphalt if it's on Highway 12, 26, and that pollution is going to be in the air because right now, maybe we disclose where we're getting the asphalt right now from. You're getting the asphalt? You're buying the asphalt? I trust this guy? And on this issue, I support him? They got to go through a lot of pollutant called BS to satisfy certain segments. They like to use scare tactics. Yes, asphalt does smell. And I'd rather have that smelly asphalt coming from my neighbors who creates jobs than an asphalt being brought up for a couple of months. I don't know what's the total mileage that the gentleman got his exclusive with this county. You're still going to use asphalt. Nobody been saying, oh, that asphalt is awful. We better tear up the street and take us to some other county and go back to gravel If you did your due diligence, and your real estate agent disclosed to you that, yes, there's a quarry, and they disclosed what options they have at the time they purchased the land, they're also, oh, my God, they can do this also? Well, if you were concerned, you should have done your due diligence. If you were too dummy and short-sighted, greedy because you got a good deal because you bought your house next to an industrial park, put up for it.
Mr. Race, you've got 30 seconds.
Folks, as far as the state goes, all those environment rules, see how the state taking care of the environmental rules when it comes to the choo-choo train, folks? When it's convenient, you use it. When it's not convenient, we just ignore it. I want this county to be not just a place where we're going to see who we can tax extra, but let's create jobs, and that's going to create the right environment.
Thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Hi, everyone. My name is Elaine St. John, and I live in Copperopolis. I'm a licensed drill tour. I've been licensed since 1997. And a lot of people are very impassioned about some of the environmental challenges. We have a local disclosure in Copperopolis regarding the asbestos plant that's there. However, we're buying and selling real estate there all the time, so I don't really see that that is a big issue. Regarding the environmental issues, there was a problem. Somebody said that this could be considered a take for the fish hatcheries and whatnot. But I want you to know that there are more than 35 asphalt-lined fish hatcheries in both Oregon and Washington State. So they're using that and they're raising finrowing fish, and it seems to be working quite well. Also, there are California reservoirs, there are actually 20, that are lined with asphalt. And these are drinking water for residents in the state of California. So when I did my research, I said to myself, you know, it doesn't really seem like it's that dangerous if fish are able to be raised in this environment. And also, if, you know, reservoirs for drinking water. And I have something here from Ed Schlecht, who's a district engineer, and it says more than 30 fish hatcheries are operated by Oregon and Washington State, and most commonly used are actually the hot asphalt, which is what we're talking about. So that is in Washington State. I also have something here that I'll be giving to you. The asphalt liners in California reservoirs, there's a Skinner reservoir in Marietta Hot Springs, which is lined with HMA. And there is also in Rancha Cucamongo, just to name two of the 20 different places that are lined with asphalt for drinking water. So after reviewing this, I am not as concerned as some of the other people that might not have done some research. And I would like to give a copy of that to you.
Thank you very much.
And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Could I get a show of hands of anyone who hasn't spoken that intends to speak during the public comment period?
Don't think they heard you.
Okay, let me ask you one more time. Excuse me. Can I have a show of hands of anyone who hasn't spoken that intends to speak today? So we've got two. So we'll just, we'll hear you, and then we're going to be taking a break for lunch.
So we get 10 minutes each?
No, I don't think so. Nice try.
Joe Kelly. I'd like to thank Joyce Tekel for bringing this forward, whether through legal terms. I would like to thank our environmental health director, Brian Moss, for that, I now call him Mr. Sequa. I do applaud Joyce. What she got up here and said is what their organization looks at, they have to come and be scrutinized by the law. And when we don't do that, then we're not in a good position. This morning, I came in a little late, but I was hearing all this stuff about the ordinances, ordinance 250 in 1961, all the way down to, well, at least, they went down to 1986, I think, but '78, we had board of supervisors ordinance 1945. Now, something I haven't heard was, if there is an effect under 17 dash point 02020, effect on previous approvals, which A, any land use or permit which was valid under the provisions of ordinance 250 and its amendments shall be presumed to be valid as long as all conditions of its original issuance are satisfied and as long as a period of one year has not passed since the use was last active at its permit site. B, any land use or permit which was valid under the provisions of ordinance 945 or its amendments shall be presumed to be valid as long as all conditions of its original issuance are satisfied and as long as a period of one year has not passed since the use was last active at its permit site. C, any land use which was established in violation of provisions of ordinance 250 and its amendments or ordinance 945 and its amendments shall be presumed not to be in compliance with this title and shall be required to conform with the standards in effect at the time of its discovery. Well, this thing is now just coming forward to be looked at, to be, whether it's going to be able to be adopted or not. So I agree with Mr. Moss, Sequa, and all the environmental issues need to be addressed. And the people's discussion that you've heard here today need to be addressed. Because if these people start leaving and these houses can't sell, you're going to have a ghost town here, and it's going, all it's going to be is our, maybe just five supervisors. And by the way, I'm out of the unrepresented area of District One. I just wanted to get that straight, too. So please, pay attention to what the folks are saying because they're the ones who have to live with it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. I'm Al Segal, Taxpayer Association. Also, 50 years ago, I was a soils technician and then a construction inspector at San Francisco Airport. And part of my job in both places was to monitor asphalt. And it was called A slash C on the reports that I signed, and both in the soils lab and also as a construction inspector, inspecting maybe a million tons of asphalt that was used for runways at the airport. And then as a realtor, I have some knowledge of property values. I've been a realtor for 40 years. And the, in my opinion, the rock quarry would have some negative effect on property values, but it'd be fairly slight. People are not afraid, unless it was a real problem going on, and apparently it's not. It's been there for a long time. But I looked at, I tried to look at the facts on this. And in the taxpayer association, we feel that not only are we interested in protecting the taxpayer for being taxed in a way that's not proper, but also we're concerned about the rights of the taxpayer or the public. And those rights are life, liberty, and property. We feel that government purpose is to protect those three rights. So usually it does, and we applaud that. Sometimes groups would want to take the rights away from other people. That happens frequently. And it takes a lot of courage to stand up to a highly organized group with such a purpose. However, since our purpose is to protect those rights, that has to come first. So we agree with the planning director. He acted wisely. And he didn't act, in our opinion, in a fast or hasty way. He really reviewed the history of this thing much more than we possibly could do. And so the main issue for most people in this room seems to be fear of the fumes and odors, maybe noise, and maybe a feeling that maybe this is a poison, that asphalt is some kind of thing that's going to hurt the community and cause property values to go down. Well, the fumes issue is certainly worth looking at. However, this has been pretty well covered by existing law and existing organizations such as the EPA. Also, our own environmental protection officer will be looking at that as well. So we don't expect to have fumes coming from the asphalt operation of the plant. The property owner for construction gave us quite a bit of information that I didn't know before. I didn't know that they're not going to be storing the liquid asphalt on the site. It's going to come in only for the batteries that they make. That requires a lot of coordination and expense to do that. I don't know why they wouldn't make some provision for storing it as long as they don't have a problem with odors, fumes, or any danger. In fact, there's 11 government agencies that the owner has to comply with, and he's done so for, according to them, for 25 years without incident or complaint.
Mr. Segal, you've got about a minute left.
Okay. So asphalt is not a hazard or a pollutant. It's used extensively in our roads. It sheds water, does not mix with water, not a threat to groundwater, not a threat to the river, not a threat to fish. These are all smoke screens that are thrown out. The CCWD board should have known this information before calling for a planning commission review. Knowing the facts now, it is proper for them to rescind their appeal. The asphalt plant provides an unseen benefit for the taxpayer in lower costs for building and repair of public roads. Presently, asphalt is hauled from outer county with increased transportation costs. These costs are reflected in the bid amount for road projects. This has an effect on all of us. This company is under attack with false accusations. The only hope for this company and our fragile economy is for honest people of goodwill to learn the truth and speak up.
Thank you, Mr. Segal.
Bill McManus, Hanford Hill. Regardless of what happens here today, I think it's especially thrilling to know that we're going to get to flog this issue again in front of the board of supervisors. More than likely, it's going to be appealed one way or the other. So this is just a nice training session for us to tolerate what's coming up ahead of us. I'm pleased to see so many people staying behind and after expressing their opinions because I hope what they take away from this, not that the issue is going to be settled today, is to get a good look at the More than likely, it's gonna be appealed one way or the other, so this is just a nice training session for us to tolerate what's, what's coming up ahead of us. I'm pleased to see so many people staying behind and after expressing their opinions, because I hope what they take away from this, not that the issue's gonna be settled today, is to get a good look at the, at the way their government works. In this setting, Mr. Mauer is almost like the prosecutor, and all of you are the jury, and the ordinances are what we're looking at. You know, Mr. Mauer's done a fantastic job. He hasn't gotten lost in the argument of apples and oranges being cement or asphalt, and maybe he just looks at it as fruit. And I think that's probably the best way to look at it. What I see, Calaveras County, since I've been here for thirty-five years, is slowly having to make that transition between a, a working community, a working county, and something that's more akin to the villages. So our ordinances are behind, our actions are behind, our expectations are high, performance is poor. But for everyone here that's watched this, I want you to understand, you get the government you deserve. And the board of supervisors thinks there's not enough work to do to go back to four meetings a month like they used to do. Well, there's plenty of work to do. We've got a lot of catching up to do. We've got to get back into compliance, and people have to understand, just like in the old days, if you move next to the airport, don't complain about the noise from the airplanes. So it's gonna take a while for us to get up to speed, and we need to do more of this, not less of it. So I just wanna thank the, the commission and all the citizens who showed up. I don't have a dog in this fight. When I got out of the service, I bought my first house in Manteca. And you don't know what stink is until you've been through Manteca in the sixties. You know, that would, that was really a bad, a bad situation there. So, we all moved up there for a reason. You know, I think our government is a little, little behind the curve trying to get everything done. And I hope that the people here just stick with you, and I hope you guys stick with us, and see if we can get, get through all this and solve a problem that's equitable for everybody and legal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. So we are going to adjourn for lunch, and we will be back at one-thirty? One-thirty, or shorter than that, you guys? One-thirty? We'll be back at one-thirty, at which time we will have rebuttals by the appellant and then the proponent, and then the commission will deliberate and make a decision. Now, before we do close, because I did say it's your, maybe, and both sides, we could have just a raise of hands for people that are in, you know, that support the appellant? Yes, and that would be the, you know, my Valley Springs, and there we go, just to clarify that, okay. And then the proponent, you know, with Ford Construction, just, great. So I just promised to do that. Well, then we'll just won't count you. So we are, yeah, we are adjourned till one-thirty. Thank you.